Get this baby rolling. Could've turned this off, huh? Okay, I'm showing 6:30 if I can get everybody to their seats, we'll get this meeting started. No, uh, technical, they make, uh, parts. No. Bob, did you have something before? No, okay. Okay, City Council meeting for October 10th, 2011, now come to order, remember all times indicated, next agenda items are approximate start times only. Turn off all cell phones for the duration of the meeting, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Natell.
Here.
And pressure button, please, sir.
I only got three more weeks to learn though.
Mayor Protem Snyder.
Here.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Button, sir. Thank you. Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McAldowney.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mayor Natell, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. It's nice to have everybody here, huh? Okay, will the audience and council please rise for a moment of silence, then join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would staff please pass around the microphone, introduce the audience?
Eddie Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Bob Dower.
Daniel Lee.
Jean Fashetti.
Ellen Haug.
Joslyn Hernandez.
David Gonzalez.
America will win.
Harvis Thomas.
Jerry Atso.
Tova Forga.
Yerba Serna.
Gene Lefle, Board of Adjustment.
Joey Bishop.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Georgia Maxey.
Charlie Coon.
Lisa Wayne.
Aaron Prado.
Jim Lovett.
Jim Hayes, Community Development.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you all for coming. Um, we actually have our recognition and presentation, and then another two, another presentation tonight, which is always nice, it's always nice to have the positives. Tonight, we want to recognize Atlas Copco CMT USA LLC, and also present them with a certificate, this international company has been designated by Forbes Magazine as one of the world's most innovative companies. Mr. Flannery, would you invite staff up to make the introductions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to ask Brittany Morris to introduce our guests.
Hello again, Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development, and I am going to ask Lisa Wayne to start us off tonight, she is our economic development specialist, who specializes in industrial retention and attraction, thank you.
Good evening, council. Atlas Copco received the 2011 Forbes Magazine designation of being one of the world's most innovative companies. Atlas Copco is an international company, they provide industrial productivity solutions, and they've been doing that for more than a century. The innovation level method is based on how much investors bid up the stock price of a company above the value of its existing business. It's based on expectations of future innovative results, meaning new products, services, and new markets. The company's innovation premium is 21.9. The company as a whole has experienced a five-year average sales growth of 5.8 percent, and the five-year net income growth is 8.6 percent, thank you.
And I will talk a little bit about their Commerce City operation. Atlas Copco is headquartered in Commerce City at 3700 East 68th Avenue, has been in operation since 1984, and has more than 100 employees. This is the US headquarters of the company's construction mining technique operations. The sales and service facility was opened at 10525 Havana Court earlier this year. These facilities serve the Rocky Mountain region and are responsible for the sales, after-sales service, and rental of equipment for surface and underground rock excavation, exploration drilling, rock reinforcement, ground engineering, water well, and oil and gas drilling. We are proud to have Atlas Copco, CMT USA headquartered in Commerce City, and appreciate their years of doing business in the community. And I would now like to call down city council to take, um, a moment to take a picture and to present the award to Jim Lovett, who's Vice President of Finance, and Aaron Prado, Business Controller for Atlas Copco Commerce City, thank you. And Mayor has the word.
Nope, Tracy has it.
Congratulations.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Copies will be available after the meeting.
Okay, so maybe have the two gentlemen, there we go, we're kind of angled towards me, there. That's fabulous, all right, ready, one, two. Oh, it's still looking, the light's still good, so we don't need the flash. Excellent, thank you.
And I didn't know if Jim wanted to say a couple of words, sorry I didn't call you up before.
No, no problem, we've just been part of the community for 25 years, we've enjoyed it very much, uh, it's a great neighborhood, we enjoy being part of the community, and thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you. It's always nice, because when you read the newspapers, all you hear is the bad news. Everybody's suffering, everybody's out of work, there's nothing good happening, but yet we still have companies like this that are doing terrific. Very proud of you all, you all have a good evening. The next one I am really excited about also, uh, it's a presentation by a local youth. Mr. Flannery, would you like to introduce staff, who will introduce them?
Yes, sir, uh, I'd like to introduce Ms. Ryan Cordero to introduce our special guest.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, I would like to introduce Joslyn Hernandez, if you remember, she was here in the late spring, uh, asking for your support, and the community's support to take a trip to Europe, and she'd like to tell you a little bit about her trip. Good evening.
Hello.
It is really nice to see you again.
Well, I did this to thank everybody that helped me, because I did come to the board like two, three times, asking for help, because I knew that if I kept trying, I wasn't going to be able to make it, and I did. The first place that I went was Ireland. Ireland was wonderful, the people there were so welcoming, we lasted like three, three days there, and that's where I had my homestay, so I got to stay at an actual Irish farm, where I got to meet the kids, and we were helping at a youth group in Ireland to help with the young children over there, because they said that they didn't have as many recreations for lower-class people, so we were helping them out. And in the picture on this corner is where we were collecting peat, which is what the old nursing homes use as firewood, and in the picture over here with all the singers is where we were at a campfire after we had collected the firewood, and we were learning about their music, and they were sharing with us their heritage, and then afterwards we had like a mini talent show where we were able to share with them our heritage. And then the bottom picture is right in front of my guesthouse, so you can see that it's in a beautiful view, Ireland was gorgeous the whole way through, so green. And then after that, we went to Wales, we only lasted one day in Wales, because that was pretty much just a go-through place, but we met one lady that was our delegation manager there, and she's the most hyper energetic person I've ever met. She taught us Welsh, which I don't remember so well, except for the Eon Deck tree, which means thirteen, because that was our safety for when we went over there, to make sure none of the kids were missing, since we were a group of forty. Um, we had a full-on experience, I didn't bring it, but they made each of us break a wooden board that was an inch thick, to prove to ourselves that if, if we set our minds to anything, we could make it, so that was just another example of how if I set my mind to something, I can make it. Um, that's me when I broke the board, at the full-on experience. Um, we went to a train station, which is where we stamped our passports, and as you can see, the people in, um, Wales don't like to use spaces, that's the longest name I've ever seen. Then, on the corner over here is our delegation manager, but she's the most energetic person I've ever met, even if she was sick. After that, we went to England, we spent many days in England, and our delegation manager was from there, so we visited the Tower of London, where we learned a lot of, where we learned a lot about the history of there, and then also about local legends from the ravens. Um, we also met a member of parliament, which explained how different their system is compared to ours, so they explained the Queen, and how that works, and we had a make-believe dinner with Henry VIII, and afterwards, we went to go see a play, I couldn't take any pictures of the play because cameras weren't allowed there, but it was still amazing, because we saw the Million Dollar Quartet, which everybody thought was going to be boring, but at the very end, we all ended up dancing and singing along. The top one is when we were in the Tower of London, in the back there, since we were a people-to-people group, we got to stay after it closed, and do an extra experience, we got to train as if we were knights, as if we were back then. And then, the guy with the pink tie, that's the member of parliament, and he's the only person I've met that can make a history lesson seem fun, and I could stay awake through it. And then over here, we were at the medieval banquet, so everything was decorated as if it was one of the medieval castles. Then we went to the Isle of Wight, where for two days, we just windsurf, kayaked, we built a raft, and we went dinghy boat sailing, and we were in these really tight wet suits the whole time, but it was worth it, because I got over my fear of the ocean, because I've never like, I've been there before, but not like that, like on a boat and everything, where I look down, and if I fall, I can't touch the ground. So, our boat flipped over like twenty times in the course of two days, but everything was worth it, I made so many friends there, because this is where we had the most free time. We went crab fishing on the last day, which I didn't realize, we were all swimming in a, filled with that until the very last day. Um, I didn't get to take many pictures here, because all of our luggage was kept in that room that's behind me over there, but this is our delegation manager, and that's one of the friends that I made on this trip. And then we also studied World War II in France, when we went to Normandy Beach and Omaha Beach. So, we saw how the American forces landed to help the Europeans against Germany, we went to the cemetery over there that held over 33,000 soldiers, and many of us got emotional there, because we were, we were finally able to appreciate what our people has done for us, because I think many kids nowadays take history, take, take this, for example, in vain, not realizing how much it means to us now. I was able to really appreciate that, especially when we went to the Peace Museum, and we went to Anne Frank's house, so we were able to experience how her life was, where she had to stay hidden for two years, to escape the Nazis, before she was finally found. That's a picture of the cemetery, and it's made so that it doesn't matter where you're standing from, it always makes a V, that stands for the victory that we had over there against Germany. On the left over here, you can see how the land was left after all of the bombs that went off. And over here, after, um, we left the cemetery, they gave us time to roam around, and I took this picture that I thought was a beautiful view, because I couldn't stand, I couldn't stand, keep walking on the graves without feeling bad, because like, it felt, like it was just, it was overwhelming, being there. And then, we went to France, where we saw the Eiffel Tower, and we were able to go to the top, which our delegation manager paid for himself. Um, we went in the largest roundabout, the one with, where the, um, the Tour de France ends, and they told us that if you get in a car accident there, no insurance company in the world will pay for it, on the other hand, they'll make you pay for it. Um, we went to the Notre Dame Cathedral, and I took many pictures everywhere, and that's where I ate frog legs in a cargo, which I don't know why they just give fancy names to stuff that are like really gross, but I still tried it, and frog tasted like chicken for some reason, and the snails were just really garlicky. Um, the meal was great, and I'm glad that I was able to venture out from what I'm used to here. That's where we went. And I'd just like to say thanks again to everybody that was able to help me through, because I knew that if I set my mind to this trip, I was able, I was going to be able to make this. And I worked for half a year, and thanks to all of you, and many other people, I was able to make my goal come true. Thank you, guys.
Comment from council? Congratulations, and the nice part is, that I enjoy, is watching people coming up out of our schools, like you. Kids are really, you're doing well, and what a chance, this is something you'll remember for the rest of your life. Yes, congratulations. We'll be looking for, is that your sister? We'll be looking for her to come through here in a few years. Thank you for coming. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication, and we just have one tonight, Tova Forgo, come forward, please, um, state your name and address for the record, you're reminded, each speaker's limited to three minutes, city councils are reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions, express concern when appropriate. Good evening.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, my name is Tova Forgo, 7980 Olive Street. This Thursday, the CCBPA, the Commerce City Business and Professional Association, is hosting a candidate forum for candidates running for mayor, wards two and four, and at-large. It will be here in council chambers from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, and the League of Women Voters of Adams County will be keeping time and moderating the event. Questions have been solicited from the public, if anyone would like to submit a question, please email it to info@ccbpa.net. We will be continuing to accept questions until Wednesday at 5:00. Because the number of candidates we regret, we will not be able to take questions from the audience that night, because of the tight, tight agenda, but we do welcome questions submitted before Wednesday. We are expecting full participation from all the candidates, and the public is certainly invited to attend here in council chambers, and it's going to be broadcast live on Channel 8, and rebroadcast over the next few weeks. Again, candidate forum this Thursday, council chambers, 6:30 to 9:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, would you mind repeating the email address? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch you before you got all the way in the back, it's one of those, how far would you have been if you, if I hadn't called you?
Sure, it's info, I-N-F-O, at ccbpa.net.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there's two sets of minutes before council this evening for approval. First of the minutes of the meeting of August 22nd, 2011, before voting on the minutes of August 22nd, I need a motion to allow Mayor Protem Snyder and Councilman McAldowney to abstain from voting because of their excused absences. Uh, Mr. Bullock? Mr. Diaz?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, to allow Mayor Protem Snyder and Councilman McAldowney to abstain from voting on the minutes of August 22nd, any discussion, seeing none, voice vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same, motion carries, thank you, I'll now entertain the motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2011, Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move approval of regular meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2011.
Ms. Moreno?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second, approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2011, any discussion, seeing none, voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same, motion passes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, what'd I miss?
You didn't miss anything, um, I was approached by, just approached now by a member of the audience, who indicated that they had wished to speak during Citizen Communication, but didn't see the sign-up sheet in the back of the room.
Any challenge with bringing someone up? What I'd like to do is, just finish the next minute, so we can, and then we'll slip it in there, is that okay? Okay. The next set of minutes are the minutes for the meeting of August 29th, 2011, before voting on the minutes of August 29th, need a motion to allow Councilman Bullock to abstain from voting because of excused absence, Ms. Carson?
Move.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, to allow Councilman Bullock to abstain from voting on the minutes of August 29th, any discussion, seeing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same, motion passes. Now, um, I need a motion to approve the minutes of August 29th, Mr. McAldowney?
So moved.
Ms. Snyder?
Second the motion.
Okay, better motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 29th, is there any discussion, seeing none, voice vote, please, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same, motion passes. If we could have whoever it was that requested to speak come forward, need a name and address for the record, sir? And again, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, I didn't know the sign-up procedure.
Oh, not a problem.
Um, I'm Richard Schmidt, I own the property at 10-500 Havana Court, which is directly north of the overpass of, uh, 104th over I-76, and I was curious, so I went into the, um, office here, uh, over there, off of, uh, Rosemary, and talked with the planner on 104th, and found out the access to Havana Street was going to be substantially changed, and I just, uh, wanted to voice my concern, in that I selected that lot because of the exposure and access, it's on the frontage road just, um, to the north of I-76, and I have tenants, a multi-tenant warehouse there, and I brought along, um, Amco, who is also leased the property because of the exposure and access, and the access portion from the eastbound traffic, um, excuse me, from the west traffic going eastbound, is going to be substantially changed, it's going to be routed way over to 106th, back over to Havana Street, back around, it's just a big circle, it's going to add about a half a mile, and, um, I just want to request some revaluation of that access there.
Okay. Okay, all right, okay, Mr. Flannery, I'm not familiar with that particular piece of land, um, but would it be possible for you to bring something forward? We haven't seen this piece come up yet, but would it be possible for you to bring some information up on this piece of land, so that we would have a little more information, so?
Sure, we can, we can put a memo and, and some maps together.
Would you mind having whoever needs to talk to this gentleman, so we know that we're talking, and then we'll be back to us, so that we know, I don't know if you want to turn it to Mr. McBroom, or handle it yourself, but just so he has some contact outside of a planner.
Right, I believe he's met with Greg Clements, um, in Public Works, but Mr. McBroom is aware of the situation as well, and so, uh, they can sit down and meet, and discuss it. The, this is all over the 104th improvements, so there's some, there's some logistics, I think, with, with the right-in, right-out at that location, but they're establishing another access further to the west, to allow other access into the businesses back there, but, um, I, I'm, this is the first I've heard of the issue myself, so I'll go back and, and meet with staff as well, to find out more.
Sir, is that, it's not that I want to, but I want to make sure that we've got everything in line, so that you know what we're doing, and we know what you're doing, and?
I just want to know who, who, who can Jerry and myself contact?
Those are the two gentlemen you're going to want to talk to, that's the city manager and his deputy, there's nobody higher than them as far as city personnel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Benson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to know how this gentleman accesses his property right now, is it?
As you're going west on 104th, and you're approaching the overpass, you make a left turn directly onto the frontage road, onto Havana Street. It's just right west of the overpass.
You're saying it's on the, uh, the east side of I-76?
Uh, west side.
As you go over the overpass, there's going to be a blinking yellow light?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just a, a block up from there, a block east of there.
To east of there, okay.
Is where we make our access now.
Okay.
And that is where they propose to make the new access, and take it way over to 106th, around Havana, and then around, and it's going to make the access to our property, they're going to see- They're going to see, I see you, but I don't know how to get there.
Okay.
Well, I would like to see a map, Mr. Flannery, I guess, like the mayor said of...
I have one.
How this, you do have one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could we get a copy of that, perhaps?
Okay. What I don't want to do is get into discussion at this point where not everybody has information. We're not going to be making any decisions here. I think Mr. Flannery understands what he needs to do at this point and to come back to council with a report.
Well, Mr. Flannery, do you, would that understanding include showing us a map of the access as it exists now and how it would be changed, how it's proposed to be changed?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Councilman Benson, we would put a memo together explaining the plan and then attach diagrams to show existing and future.
And so what is the timetable for actually making the change? When is that actually going to occur?
Looks like it's next year, probably six months out, so we have enough time.
So we've got a little time. And what is the completion date on the 104th Highway 85 intersection? That's coming up pretty...
That one's ongoing, but what's the timeframe? We're looking at next summer, probably.
Oh, next summer. But this is, is this all part of that?
This is all one continuation of the project.
All right. Well, I'd be, I'd be interested to see the map.
We can, we can get something back to you pretty quick.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Mr. Flannery, or Mr. McBroom, is that where the fire station is, right down there on Havana?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I know what you're talking about now, so that is going to do some limit access for the fire department, too?
We're still going to have access going eastbound, but it's going to be making a left at the stop, at the flashing light, going past the firehouse, way over to 106th, then on 106th over to Havana Street, and then circling around to the frontage road. We're, we're frontage on I-76.
Okay, yeah, I would be interested in seeing this, too, because it sounds, I, I, but I know that if planners has nothing to do with it, there's a reason why they're doing this. I just need to see the whole plan, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Okay, there's actually six resolutions on the agenda for tonight that require a separate voice vote. The first is Resolution 2011-43, a resolution approving city council policy, CP-19, regarding discretionary funds. Discussion from council, Mr. Marino?
I'd actually like to move to amend the agenda for placement of Resolution 2011-43 following Resolution 2011-48.
Following, hold on one sec. Is, is there a reason?
I understand that there may be some discussion on council, on, yes, between council, on Resolution 2011-48 that may affect Resolution 2011-43, so I'd just like to postpone it until after we've had the discussion on that resolution.
Yeah. Anybody have a challenge or just moving in? I'll need a motion.
Move to postpone Resolution 2011-43 following Resolution 2011-48.
Can you get a second, Mr. McElDowney? Discussion on the movement?
Move 48 up to do it first.
I'm sorry?
You can move 48 up to do it first if they want to.
You, there's no, you don't want to move 48 up, do you?
Well, it's the same either way.
Let's just leave it the way it is, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay. So we'll move 43 past 48, so we'll do 48 first. Okay, so the next resolution is 2011-44, Resolution Regarding Citizen Communication at Council Meeting. Now, is there any discussion by city council? Mr. McElDowney? No?
No, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make a motion.
If there is no discussion, open for a motion, Mr. McElDowney?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-44.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
I have some discussion on it.
Can I get a second and then we can do a discussion? Yes. Can I get a second from somebody?
I will second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Marino, it's a second. Now discussion, now, Mr. Benson?
You know, under Item A, it says no citi, I know this was something that may have been discussed, is this Item A saying that we won't have citizen communication on any study session night?
No.
No. Says no, no citizen communication will be allowed on study session items. I guess, so that means that we are going to have citizen communication every time we have a meeting here.
That's correct. What this is saying is on a study session item, and you wait until it comes up for action, then you'll have your discussion on the item.
Is that all, Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-44. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads Resolution 2011-44, Resolution Regarding Citizen Communications at City Council Meetings.
Okay, better motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Next resolution is 2011-45, Resolution Improving City Council Policy, CP-21, Regarding Filling of a Council Vacancy. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would...
Mr. Gaylor?
I would advise council that I've had some inquiry regarding paragraph B, which provides that the advertising for the vacancy would be made the way it's written, 14 days, and the concern expressed to me was that when you use 14 days, you only have 30 days under the charter, which we can't change without a charter amendment. It eats up 14 days out of the 30 for just getting the names in. So what has been suggested, that you consider changing the 14 to seven to, or 10 even, days to allow the announcements to be made for interest in the vacancy. That gives you time to set up interviews for the potential candidates and so forth. Gives you a little more time, but that's just a suggestion. It's not my suggestion, I'm just throwing it out for your consideration. Question is, do you like to leave it 14 days or do you want to change it to seven or even 10 days?
Okay. Ms. Teeter, did you have a comment?
No.
Mr. McElDowney, a comment?
I, I think there is some confusion in the, in the paragraph in that the statement itself says, "The announcement should be made at least 14 days prior to the final date for submitting an application for appointment." Yet Paragraph A cites that we need to select someone within 30 days after the vacancy occurs. So I think the point of clarification needs to be, from point of vacancy to point of announcement, needs to be a fairly tight window. The final submission date for interest needs to be clearly defined. I don't know that that in and of itself is spelled out right. That seems to be the missing date element unless I'm looking past it. We specify a notice window in advance of the final selection date. We specify a date that the vacancy must be filled, but there's a third element there which is, what's the deadline for submission?
Right. Now, the, the way I left that was that it's advertised, but as part of the advertising, it's announced when the, the interest has to be submitted back to the city clerk's office, so that's, that's not covered.
But I guess my point is if we had specified that date, that 14 days may hold valid, right? So if you, for example, had to have your submissions in 10 days prior to the vacancy needing to be filled, then 14 days prior to that would actually work, right? I mean, I guess my point is you've got a value in there that needs to be called out as, as far as...
In the next sentence, if you chose, then you could say, "Must submit a letter requesting appointment to the vacant's office, to the city clerk, no later than X number of days."
Prior to, I mean, I guess the point is, we've spelled out so much, but we leave that sort of open. It seems like if we...
It's left open for the city clerk, but if you wish, we could easily add that. So do you want to say, "No later than..."
Rather than put forth a suggestion that's going to make it difficult or not be logical to meet, I mean, could we defer to the city clerk on what a logical window of advertisement would be, a deadline for being turned in? And then obviously if we have to have interviews conducted and a selection made at 30 days, how do we back into those dates? Or would those...
I think your policy ought to set one guideline at least as to when the announcement is or when they have to have their letter back, one or the other, or both, but you ought to choose one to at least give the clerk some guideline. So you can leave it 14 if you want to say that they need to submit it back.
I'll, I'll change my question. Assuming that we have to have someone seated 30 days out.
Right.
Backing into a logical progression of events, how soon before those 30 days, how immediately, in other words, after the seat vacates, should we have notice posted?
Much.
And then how far before the position needs to be filled should we have, should the deadline be?
As a suggestion, I would think you need at least 10 days for you to get your questions together and to conduct your interviews. As a suggestion, you need at least 10 or maybe even more.
I would hope we don't need that much time to pull some questions together, especially...
And then conduct your interviews, too, and then...
Right.
So maybe 10 days? That gives you 20 days. So if you advertise 14 days, that gives them six days to get their names in.
I guess the problem I'm having with this policy is that if a citizen interested in filling a vacancy looks at this policy, they don't know anything more than what the policy says.
Okay.
So I think we have to be explicit in defining from the point of vacancy is declared or in effect, whatever begins that 30-day countdown. We need to specify the number of days from that point or between that declaration and when the notice need to be made. And then the next date needs to be when applicants need to have submitted their letter of interest. And just make it very specific. It's X days till this point, it's Y days to the next point. And that way, the variable on that could be, if that falls on a date that's not a meeting or it's a holiday, we would need language to support that. I don't know, I mean, this is my, my two cents. I would defer to others. I mean, we have a recent applicant here. I would defer to Mr. Diaz for his personal insight on the confusion of the process that he just went through and the policy that's before us.
It was definitely a confusing process, and just kind of looking at it, was 14 days what we had prior before this new policy?
That was the advertising time.
Okay, the average, I mean, as you pointed out, Bob, I think it would make sense if it was just like seven days, seven to 10 days. I mean, if that was the minimum, just because I was kind of working through the timeline over here. The way that it worked out was, say the due date is 14 days before, and let's say the interviews was the next week, which would be 21, and then the appointment for the final three would be 28. I just feel like that would be kind of cutting it close. And so it felt chaotic to me, so if there was a way that we can divide up the time, space it out a little bit more, I think that would be beneficial. I mean, I don't think there's any harm in moving it to seven days. That's up to you guys as well.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
My comments are on a different item.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Mr. McElDowney, did you want to make a motion to change, then?
I would move that we amend this proposed policy to specify the number of days within which the vacancy is declared, that it needs to be posted. I would further clarify, ask that we clarify the policy to include a deadline for submission calculated from the date of vacancy being made known.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Flannery?
When, when a vacancy is created, I mean, the timeframe to advertise is immediate. You know, I, you know, certainly you can say within two days, but I mean, I think by and large, 95% of the time, you're going to know that it's coming, that somebody's saying, "I'm going to, I'm going to resign," or "I'm going to, I have to move." It's only probably a few times, and I actually hesitate to think of what those situations might be where it would immediately happen. But even then, you have to schedule it and advertise it, so we would, we would probably advertise it as soon as possible. We have, we have papers every week in the city that advertise or that, that have deadlines, so we would probably do it as soon as possible. As far as timeframe, I think we did leave, once we advertised, a two-week timeframe for applications, and then in that timeframe, we worked to put together questions. So it worked out, within three weeks or so, you were interviewing and then you appointed. Well, you appointed the same night, I'm sorry.
And I guess that's my point, that the policy doesn't support that description of the practice at all, right? I mean, what you're specifying is that the announcement would be made immediately, and there's no language in paragraph B that speaks to that. It essentially says that we have to do so 14 days before we need to fill the slot. And I would, unless I'm reading it backwards...
It's 14 days prior to the application being submitted.
The, the final date for submitting an application for appointment. We don't specify how far out or how far in advance of filling the seat that application is due, so it's just sort of a, an odd way to describe the policy.
As a suggestion, just to move this along, if we said the announcement must be made at least seven days prior to the final date for submitting, that's the starting point, at least seven days, could do it in less, as the city manager says, if the newspaper falls in line with that. And then at least 15 days prior to the date of filling the vacancy, the applications must be received. That gives you then 15 days to call a meeting and conduct your interviews.
And I'm fine with that, and I'm being nitpicky, and I apologize, but I think we owe it to our citizens. The title of paragraph B is "advertisement of vacancy." Nothing in here specifies how soon from the point of vacancy is declared that it needs to be advertised to the public.
So we change the title, too?
Or clarify how quickly the advertisement needs to occur, and then the other pieces fall into line.
Yeah. So did you like that timeframe or do you want to change it?
It's fine, so long as we advertise within days as is suggested by the city manager of the vacancy coming into play.
Okay, so now it would read, if you change the title, "Advertising and Filling of Vacancy." How's that?
Okay.
So the title would read, "Advertising and Filling of Vacancy." Then the second sentence, which is on the third line, would read, "The announcements shall be made at least seven days prior to the final date for submitting an application." The announcement shall state that the office is vacant, that interested person, parties must submit a letter requesting appointment to the vacant officer, office, to the city clerk, at least 15 days prior to the date of filling the vacancy.
All the rest of it makes sense.
Okay.
In the second sentence, it needs to read something along the lines of, "The announcement shall be made within 72 hours of vacancy being notified." Period. Right? I mean, the paragraph is about notification to the public. So statement of how fast that notification needs to occur needs to be, in my mind, a foundational piece of that paragraph. Then we can talk about, you know, how long prior, I mean...
The reason that had the seven days at least is because you got to get your, if you're going to advertise in a newspaper, it's got to be in at least, depending on the, on the publication you're going to use. If it's going to be a daily, that's one thing, but if you're going to use the weekly, it's got to be in, it works out about seven days prior to the day it comes out for publication. That's why the seven days is used. But if you want to use a daily, then you can move it up.
We can, I guess my thought here is you can post it on the internet in a matter of minutes.
And you, and you could post...
And so you could, you could certainly make the vacancy known through contemporary mediums immediately. And then you can allow for whatever timeframe might need to expire in order to get it into whatever other papers you might want. I think the piece here that I'm trying to get to is, let's be specific about how quickly we can get notice out to our community about this so that someone who... we can get notice out to our community about this, so that someone who has interest, may have interest, can be made aware as quickly as possible and go through the soul search that's necessary to make the decision to jump in the deep end.
So you want to move it up to less than seven?
I would like to be explicit in the number of days from the point the vacancy is made known, and if there is no support for that, then I'll stop talking. I think I've made this in the form of a motion. Is there a second on my motion?
Okay, Ms. Teeter made a second.
And what was the timeframe you said?
I said, I suggested within seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
I second the motion.
I was waiting for you to stop writing.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that change? And I've got the whole board lit up, so if somebody wants to make a statement on this, you're going to have to let me know.
I'd just like for Bob to read it back, so we can hear what we're voting on.
Well, he has to read it next. So I have a motion and a second. Now the city attorney will read the title.
Okay, do you want to change, or do you want just to change?
Just to change, yes.
The announcement shall be made at least seventy-two hours prior to the final date for submitting an application for appointment. So far, so good? The announcement, well, that was what your motion was, only dealt with the seventy-two hours, so that's what you're voting on.
Real quickly, I don't think that language still works. Isn't it, isn't it seventy-two hours after the vacancy has been made?
Yes, yes, that, it is. We need to specify whatever conditions are.
I'm sorry to beat this up, I mean, it doesn't, this shouldn't be that hard. We have a vacancy that occurs, whatever conditions create the vacancy, we need a policy that specifies how quickly we have to tell the public the vacancy is available, and from then, when we, applications need to be due, and when the seat needs to be filled. I just think it needs to be-
Prior to the date required for receipt of the application?
The prior-to piece, to me, just needs to go.
Pardon me?
The prior-to language doesn't have any bearing, to me, in this paragraph.
Okay, give me the wording you like.
It needs to say, "From the date of vacancy, seventy-two hours, we announce, however many more days before those need to be turned in, however many more days before we need to interview, and then finally, we have somebody seated thirty days out." It's a progression, and so we need to speak of it in terms of step A, step B, step C, step D.
Now then, the announcement shall be made at least seventy-two hours after the date of vacancy, after the date the vacancy is declared.
That sounds right.
Okay, that's what you're voting on.
So we are going to vote on just that one statement, or the whole thing?
I think his motion-
I believe my motion was amended to include, to specify, so it was approval of the policy with those clarifications.
Okay.
Good. Excellent. So I have a motion and a second. We've had that read back. Do I still need you to read the title before we vote?
One, Mr. Mayor, one second.
Go ahead, sir.
I also had comments on a different item than Mr. McElDowney, so just while I-
Okay, so we're back to discussion.
Just on item F, choice of applicant, I'm a little confused by the language, "After all interviews have been completed, the city councils shall deliberate with each other." To my recollection, that did not happen in the last council vacancy, and I just wanted to get other council members' thoughts on the fact that we'll deliberate after the interviews to select our, my impression was that it was a very personal and individual decision being made, and that there was no deliberation between the council, that there was just a score, that we scored the applicants, and then they were submitted, and then based on the totals, that person was selected. I'm just a little wary of actual conversation between council members regarding who should fill the vacancy.
I would be open to having Mr. Moreno's comments added as a friendly amendment to my motion, to effectively eliminate the language around the discussion.
So, I will make a motion to omit the language, "The city councils shall deliberate with each other," and, so it would read, "After all interviews have been completed, each city council member shall then secretly compute the total number of points," and we omit that language.
Did you have a comment?
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
Time, I just have one quick question. Mr. Flannery, do you see any problem with this seventy-two hours for your office?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carson, no. I think, as I mentioned, we will advertise in whatever medium we have as soon as possible. Most times, we know when it's coming. In any other jurisdiction I've been in, we know, we at least have some idea that it may be coming up. Like I said, there may be a few that we don't, and those are usually more drastic situations that happen, but I think as long as we as staff have a general boilerplate, and we actually have a general boilerplate from the time when Councilmember Johnson resigned, and I think we've only perfected that even better, not that it's a regular occurrence, but I think we can advertise as soon as possible, so seventy-two hours is definitely a possible.
So if that came forward and it was a holiday weekend, it was something that your staff could still possibly go forward with?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. I have two amendments.
Yeah, the motion includes both of those amendments.
Both amendments. Any further discussion? It was Ms. Teeter.
On my motion.
Your motion.
On Mr. Moreno's motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. McElDowney will second that.
Can I second an amendment to my own motion?
I will second that.
Okay. Right now, I've got Mr. McElDowney, Mr. Moreno, Mr. Bullock, and Mr. Diaz up on the board. Are any of you a discussion?
No, I actually-
Can I take, could you please take yourself off of the board?
Actually, I can bring up one more thing.
Why not?
So, Mr. Moreno brought up the point that I was going to bring up, why I originally pushed the button, but the other thing that I wanted to clarify is, unlike last time, we're not bringing in the three finalists, correct? Based on what I'm reading on F, because if you remember, when I was appointed, it was the top three vote-getters. I'll show up the following week, and then you guys vote on the top three. But based on this, what I'm reading on F is basically, once you guys have tabulated from the initial interviews, there are no second visits. It's just a straight-up appointment right after. Is that correct?
Mr. McElDowney?
I think that was a matter of having three deadlocked applicants based on the original vote cast, so we could perhaps add language that allows for a subsequent, I can't talk, a subsequent vote of, to resolve any tie. I mean, there's probably helpful to have that clarification. Great point.
Okay. That's just what I wanted to check on, because I didn't know what the previous policy was. I just can only speak of last time.
So is that now a Third Amendment?
Let me just, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, I actually think it needs to be spelled out. I mean, the whole objective of this is to spend the time right now sweating the details, so that we don't do it within the thirty-day window of an appointment, because that's a huge hassle for the clerk, it's a huge hassle for us, and it's a huge hassle for staff, so where we need to be explicit, let's be explicit.
So are we saying that if we deem that it's necessary to have that, or should we just say that the top three vote-getters will basically do a revote?
I think we anticipated, and I'll speak for myself, in an attempt to speak on behalf of council, I think we expected to have a final selection out of our vote, and found ourselves with three deadlock, three members deadlock, or applicants deadlocked, and so we had to, on the fly, come up with a means by which to resolve that tie. So I would think that the chances of that happening again are not impossible, and we should have a practice to address it.
Mr. Moreno?
So, to kind of gather Mr., our Councilman Diaz's and Councilman McElDowney's thoughts, perhaps we could add just language that will include, "If no clear applicant is, or if no clear winner is decided by the first round of voting, subsequent rounds of voting may occur," something simple like that.
So, does this bring up the whole idea of now we have to deliberate right after voting? I mean, this is my question.
No, I imagine that Ms. Bauer would come back, say that there was no clear-
That it was clear.
-selection, and then we would take another vote?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Gaylor? So do we have a Third Amendment?
Yes.
Somebody's going to bring that motion forward? Mr. Diaz?
Second, can I second the third one?
You can second the third one.
To avoid voting separately on each of these, is it the council's feeling that we have one motion that incorporates all these items that have been discussed in one motion? So whose motion is it? Mr. McElDowney's motion? He made it first.
And Ms. Teeter seconded originally.
All right, so then we disregard any other subsequent-
And incorporate them all together?
Yes. That they're all incorporated in that one motion.
Formally, then I would amend my amendment, amend my motion to incorporate the suggestions relative to specifying notice, clarifying, or excluding the language around discussion, and third, eliminating, or clarifying, language around protocol in the case of a tie.
And I will second that.
Okay. Now I have a motion and a second. I have three amendments. City attorney needs to read the title one more time, just so I know everything is-
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-45, resolution approving council policy number CP-21 regarding filling of a council vacancy."
Okay, motion and a second. City attorneys read the title, request a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I hope we don't get any hard ones. Next is Resolution 2011-46, a resolution adopting procedure for conduct of quasi-judicial public hearings as council policy CP-22. Is there any discussion? How would I know this? Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. First of all, on November the third, CML is holding a short workshop, Tammy Tanneaway from Sursa. Might be a good idea for anybody on the council who wants to attend that, to go to it. It kind of gives you a lot of pointers on quasi-judicial proceedings. You know, one question that I had about this was in paragraph M, absence by a council member. I didn't know that, I guess paragraph M only comes into effect if, under paragraph N, the council decides to postpone voting on the matter. Is that right, Mr. Gaylor?
I mean, paragraph M says that if a council member is absent, he/she shall not be eligible to vote on the case unless he/she has listened to and reviewed the entire record of the hearing.
Right.
Which would have to be after that meeting, so it would seem that only if the council decides to postpone a vote on the decision-
Absolutely.
-would M come into effect.
Right, and what it envisions is, you have a public hearing, the council member is absent, and then you're going to have a vote taken at a subsequent meeting, and now that council member is present and wishes to vote. And the ruling would be, is the only way you can vote is if you have reviewed that record, and that you're familiar with the case, and you're qualified then to render a decision on the evidence that's been presented.
Have we ever had that situation come up? I just don't recall that.
There have been an occasion or two, I recall, where it has come up. We had a public hearing, and for whatever reason, a vote wasn't taken that night. You continued it for the purpose of reviewing the evidence or considering the evidence, and then at a subsequent meeting, you convened for a vote, and at that subsequent meeting, the absent member was present, and then the only way that absent member could vote is if he's familiar with the evidence in the case.
I just didn't recall that happening in the past, but I can see-
It may not have happened while you've been in the council, but it has occurred.
Because as long as, of course, M and N have to be read together, and they make sense if you say that the only way that an absent member can vote is if the vote is taken later, or if somebody moves to have a revote that voted with the majority, so, all right, that answers my concern. But again, I would urge anybody to go to that November the third workshop.
Mr. Bullock?
I wish my question to make a motion.
Is there any further discussion? Now open for a motion, Mr. Bullock, make the motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2011-46.
Ms. Snyder?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-46, resolution adopting procedure for conduct of quasi-judicial public hearings as council policy number CP-22."
I have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title, request a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Resolution 2011-47, resolution updating council policy CP-2. Any discussion by council? Mr. Benson?
Yes, and this is something that I brought up several times during our original passage of this council policy. It's the use of, throughout this, that somebody is going to endeavor to do something. I mean, sometimes it says that they'll endeavor to do it, other times it says they will do it, other times it says they shall do it. I don't know how these distinctions can be made, and I would be for eliminating this word endeavor. I mean, if we're supposed to do something, then either get it done or tell somebody why you can't do it, but just to say, "Well, I endeavored to do it," it just doesn't seem right to me, but.
Well, that's an easy fix. I can simply change that to the word "shall" or "will" as appropriate.
Now, just leave out the word endeavor in most cases, but it's all over this. It's on just about every page that there's a will endeavor to.
Well, one thing that you see on this particular, this was not a rewrite by me for this occasion. What it was, was an amendment which is on page sixty-one of your packet, page ten of the resolution, or the policy, which provides that the council member shall not receive confidential information or attend executive sessions on a particular topic if the city council first determines that council member has a conflict of interest. That comes out of a city attorney's meeting where the problem arose in a neighboring city where a city council member had a direct conflict of interest, and they wanted to go into an executive session to discuss it, and the city council member was insisting upon his presence in the exact session, and it posed a real problem for that city council, and the strong recommendation from city attorney section of CML was that the council have a policy dealing with that unfortunate situation, and that's what brought this up, but Councilman Benson's point is well-taken.
I mean, I brought up this endeavor stuff the first time that we passed this.
And you did, and you did, and in my redrafting of this provision in there, I did not go back through the resolution for the council policy to change it.
I understand.
But now's the time to correct it, and simply adopting it with that direction, I can easily do that.
All right. And I also had a question about the paragraph that you added. You know, we faced a similar situation at the E470 meeting a couple of weeks ago, where there was an executive- there was an executive session over this Tower Road off-ramp, and everyone agreed that I would be able to attend that executive session, even though I had no personal financial conflict.
Right.
And I represented the city, and they felt that because I represented the city, I was entitled to be there.
As a board member.
And if this is going to be enforced, when you just say conflict of interest, I think that should be defined to say that you have, and I don't know, you can look into this if you want to, and if the council agrees, it should be a personal
Personal financial.
Financial interest, right.
I agree.
That should be something that would eliminate somebody from the executive session, but just saying conflict of interest
Yeah.
is very, very broad, and if you eliminate somebody from an executive session, that's a serious thing, and I was...
And I might mention, members of council, that I was present at E470 meeting
Right.
that Mr. Benson refers to, and it certainly was not my intention or expectation that he would be excluded from that exec session, because he was a board member, and he had an interest because he represented Commerce City, and we were, we, Mr. McBroom and I, were making a presentation regarding the contract that the City of Commerce City has with E470, and that was not a personal financial conflict of interest, and that's what this is aimed at. So, clarification, I would suggest adding has a personal financial conflict of interest, and I think that would cure it.
Mr. Bullock?
I think so. On page 59, in the new comment that was written in the red, public comments shall not, oh, page 8 of 59 out of 71, the public, B, public comments shall be allowed on all action items on introduction. The mayor, mayor pro temp, or any council member acting as mayor, or the parliamentarian, shall limit public comment as necessary to avoid prolonged discussion. And can we put in prolonged or repetitious discussion? Because sometimes prolonged doesn't say that a lot of people are going to get up and say the same thing over and over again, so can we add the...
Or repetitious?
Okay.
Sure. Okay. So, what I have, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I have paragraph 1B, public comments should be allowed on all action items, and adding the word prolonged or repetitious discussion, and then on page, that was on page 59, and then on page 61, in sub-paragraph 6E, I've added in front of the words conflict of interest, the words personal financial conflict of interest.
Mr. Benson?
Oh, yes, going to page 56, and this is something that seems like the council passed about the same time that we passed that limitation on citizen communication, and it's the, that if council makes a request of staff, we're only entitled to 30 minutes of work. Otherwise, we have to pay for it, or we have to get the permission of the whole council. I would like to see that increased to one hour. This is paragraph 2B on page 56. It's in 2B, and...
Okay, page 56 doesn't mean anything to us who use computers.
Page 5.
Thank you.
Page 5, and it's in another place, too. It's just paragraph 2E, no, wait.
2B.
2B, and it's one more place, too, in here. I thought it was in another place, but maybe it's not.
I don't think so.
Okay, it's just, I would like to see that increased to an hour, because 30 minutes really doesn't, a lot of times before I make a decision or vote on certain things, I like to have some information, and sometimes that information has been difficult to obtain, given that 30-minute limitation.
Mr. McElhany?
I'm open to support Mr. Benson's request, and I wanted to go back unfortunately to page 10, the paragraph that was added regarding the personal conflict of interest. The way that I read that, and if I think about the range of things that might be discussed in an executive session, framing that as exclusively financial interest doesn't necessarily make sense.
I thought you said personal and/or.
Was it an and/or, or did we replace it with, do we specify it as financial interest, or did we broaden that to be personal interest and/or financial interest? I just think about if you've got a relationship with an individual who might be under, being subject to discussion or otherwise, that's not appropriate.
I thought you said personnel or financial, is what I meant.
Okay, perfect, I just didn't catch that, thank you.
Ms. Carson?
So, I guess it's page 9, paragraph 4A. We run by Robert's Rules of Order, correct? So, it says each council member has the opportunity to speak after a motion is made and seconded. If someone called the question, does that not stop all of that discussion? So, how do you put that line in there?
In order to stop discussion, you have to have someone call for the question and vote on it. So, the council cuts off further debate.
But then it stops all opportunity for each council member to speak.
Well, that would take a majority vote to cut off discussion. The idea here is, is to allow, in your policy, each council member has the opportunity to speak after a motion is made and seconded.
But Robert's Rules of Order would override this, correct?
If, yeah, as parliamentarian, I would state that you certainly shouldn't cut off discussion before someone has had an opportunity to even speak the first time. It's when it becomes repetitious, and you've had three or four, or more than one chance to speak, and now you're speaking for the second, third, or fourth time, that someone can make a motion to cut off debate.
I fully agree with you. I just feel like we're rewriting Robert's Rules of Order here.
In Robert's Rules of Order, if you call for the question and somebody calls for a vote on it
That's what the question is.
It doesn't necessarily cut off discussion just for you calling for the question. Someone else can actually ask for a vote for that call on the question.
Yeah, vote on, yeah.
When you call the question, you're calling for the vote.
But if you call for the question and there was still discussion out there, I could ask for a vote for the call, and I'll tell you what page it's on.
I just needed this clarified in my own mind, that it was...
Yeah, to clarify, Mr. Mayor, if I may, your policy, if you pass this, says that each council member has an opportunity to speak after a motion is made and seconded. So, if you are attempting to cut off somebody who hasn't even had an opportunity to speak, as your parliamentarian, I would rule that out of order, because your policy says this, that you have one right to speak at least.
Okay. Back to Mr. Benson.
You know, it's my understanding of Robert's Rules that our charter, any state or federal law, any ordinance or any council policy that we pass will override Robert's Rules, and Robert's Rules are only resorted to if they're not covered by any of these other things. Is that...
That's a fair statement. We have an ordinance that says Robert's Rules of Order apply, but that is subject to any other rule that you may have.
Right. I had one other comment in page 4, down at the bottom of 1M. Counsel will provide city manager with an annual facilitated evaluation. I would add, if sufficient information is available to do so, at least from my perspective, I don't know that I've had enough information in the past.
Well, this is talking about his annual evaluation.
I understand.
Don't you want to require council to give an annual evaluation?
If sufficient information is available to do so.
It's our fault if you don't have...
Mr. McElhany, please help me.
I would suggest that this is, we can't, I mean, you can punish yourself for not doing our job, and I think that's the nature of the comment. I mean, the bottom line here is we have an obligation to facilitate a process that enables us to have the information necessary to provide that review. If we don't do so, shame on us, right? I mean, if the mechanisms by which we're facilitating the review process annually, or whatever interval we're seeking to formalize the collection or discussion of that information, isn't giving you the information you need to provide that input, then we need input from you to change the process so that you get the input. I think the policy speaks to our obligation to the city manager. Separately, we need to talk about our obligation to ourselves and to the city manager in the form of how we support that process. Is that fair?
Well, I would agree, as long as there's sufficient opportunity to get the information. I think we've made a step towards that by adding a half hour to our half-hour limitation. So, as long as that information is available, and we're able to get that information, given the one-hour limitation that we've got now, which I think is part of the amendment, is it not, Mr. Gaylor? Is that what we're proposing here?
Yeah.
It's going to be one hour and 30 minutes?
One hour.
Okay, that may make it a little easier.
Mr. McElhany?
Just to continue my comment, and then I'll step aside. The process of providing a facilitated evaluation is not to be likened to a discovery process for a trial. Rather, it's a facilitative, two-way dialogue between a council and the individual that reports to the council, to collect through the year information on that individual's performance, and provide coaching and direction to help improve the performance for the mutual benefit of the city and the council. So, whether a half hour or hour is allocated to records research, I would say that, again, we still have an obligation to provide this for the betterment of our city.
Again, Mr. Benson?
Yes, I think maybe, Mr. McElhany, we have a basic, not a dispute, but a basic difference of opinion in where these evaluations should come from, because to me, these are completely subjective evaluations, and you can't make a totally objective evaluation based on a list of questions or whatever. It's got to be, to me, it's going to be a subjective evaluation based on what I see, what I've observed, and the information I've been able to review. It might not be objective, I don't have to be objective. I can be subjective, because I'm a member of this council, and I'm entitled to give my evaluation of our city manager or any of our other employees on a subjective basis.
No disagreement there.
Good, okay.
Okay.
As long as we, can we put something like that in there, Mr. Gaylor? That these can be made on a subjective basis, and not necessarily based on a form that we've been given?
We're getting so down into the minutia that...
Well, we're talking about a city policy here that's going to be down in black and white, and somebody's going to bring it up in the future. Well, that's not what our policy says, and if it's not there, if it doesn't say it, then they're going to be right.
Okay, on a different issue, I have a small challenge, which may never come up, but may. I know we went through a lot of closed sessions over some economic development that was to take place in the city. I know that some of that information got out and went to other cities. My challenge with this, with this last part that you added, that you just made financial interest, it doesn't really say anything about conflict of interest between two parties. As a example, if we were trying to deal with a certain company here, that that wouldn't be information that another city may want, and that could make it a really bad conflict of interest.
I believe you're speaking in regard to paragraph D, section 6, paragraph D, page 10.
Actually, actually E, is that what you said? The red line.
No, I'm looking at paragraph D, because I think that speaks to what you're talking about.
The...
You're talking about confidentiality. You're talking about speaking about something outside of that executive session that occurred in the executive session. And my only point is, A, if somebody's dumb enough to talk about something that could benefit the city outside of that meeting and impact that business, shame on them. I mean, no matter, no number of paragraphs in this document are going to stop stupid, right?
Then disregard my statement.
Well, except, Mr. Mayor, to add, though, there is some, there's a violation of a policy, if you look at sub-paragraph 6B, when they violate the confidentiality of an executive session, and that's subject to a reprimand or whatever is deemed necessary if it's proven.
Yeah.
You do have that.
Okay, yeah, just disregard my statements, getting way too involved, anyway. Mr. Moreno?
Just a quick comment on the item that Mr. Benson brought up before. I would agree that reviews are somewhat subjective, but I don't think we can necessarily say that we can't have a uniform form or a uniform policy to review those people. So, I would just suggest that, you know, we continue to have reviews in a uniform way, but obviously acknowledging your point that they are somewhat subjective.
Mr. Benson?
Well, a form is a suggestion. That's the way I would look at it. It's a guide, is kind of what we're looking at, okay. You know, with regard to the conflict of interest situation on page 10, paragraph 6E, we should put in there, I believe, that all conflicts shall be disclosed, because I know in the past, Mr. Gaylor, you have asked of certain council members, well, does this issue make you unable to make a fair and impartial vote on this subject? And you've left that up to the subjective opinion of the individual council member. But I think that those, any council member should disclose the conflict of interest, and let others look at that however they want, but if it's a personal financial interest, then they can't participate in the meeting. Otherwise, they disclose it, okay, go ahead and participate in it. Like, I had a conflict of interest representing Commerce City in an E470 executive session. Everybody knew about that, but it was allowed, because I'm a member of that board.
Mr. McElhany?
Sorry, that's from prior comment.
Mr. Bullock?
My life is not...
It isn't anymore, I just put you off, but you were.
Um...
We're just, we're trying to...
I just want to get this over with, because I think we're doing exactly what we said we weren't going to do
Yes.
with the repetitious
Yes.
thing, so can we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, I appreciate it, and we need to get there. Can I get a motion? Ms. Teeter?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-47, with any amendments?
Ms... I'm sorry. Ms. Snyder?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Mr. Benson, is there more discussion?
Well, I wonder what the amendments are. Can you go over those?
I'll review them, if you like, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, sir.
And are we going to add that all conflicts shall be disclosed? Okay.
Yes. All right, I'll go back, as best I understand what was discussed and what seemed to be the consensus without voting on it, so correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, first of all, I'm going to take out any reference to endeavor and make it a requirement.
Okay.
Okay. item 1B, on page eight, I've added the word prolonged or repetitious discussion.
Thank you.
On page 10, I've added personnel or financial conflict of interest, and I've added, each city council member shall disclose to the entire city council, any conflict of interest.
Okay.
Those are the amendments that I gathered, the council discussed. I realize there were some other, there was some other discussion, but I didn't detect a feeling of consensus on anything else.
It sounds like that might refer to the personal financial conflict of interest.
Personnel or financial conflict.
Okay. As long as you separate the two, because the personal financial is going to be the killer.
And then I forgot one. There was, I changed the time period from 30 minutes to one hour. City manager said he didn't have any problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Benson?
Mr. McElhany?
I'm sorry.
Are we done?
No, I thought Mr. Benson was still speaking.
I had one, you know, in paragraph 1M, the council will provide city manager with an annual facilitated evaluation. You know, we could just put an annual subjective facilitated evaluation. I think that would probably meet my...
That's nuts, sir.
Sir, let's don't make personal comments. Just because you don't understand what we're talking about, doesn't mean that you should object. I mean, don't tell me that it's nuts, okay?
Point of order.
These are something, these are things that we're going to be living with for years and years and years, until we change them.
Yes.
But don't tell me that something is nuts, all right?
Mr. Gaylor.
He's not from this data.
Point of order.
Mr. Gaylor?
My suggestion is, is if Mr. Benson wants to pursue that line of thinking, that you have a vote on that specific item, before we move on to the entire policy. So, we get that handled, and move ahead.
Mr. Benson?
What?
Do you want to vote?
Make a motion, sir?
I would move that we amend paragraph 1M, to insert the word subjective. Council will provide city manager with an annual subjective facilitated evaluation, just to insert the word subjective.
Do I have a second? Seeing none, motion fails.
Now we're ready for a vote on the entire resolution?
Now we're ready.
I haven't read the title yet.
Yeah, I know. Have we had, seriously, have we had a motion and a second on this?
Yes.
Okay. It's been so long.
Title reads, Resolution 2011-47, Resolution Updating Council Policy CP-2.
Okay, and a motion and a second. City attorney has read the title. Request of voice, vote please. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Because, it has been my understanding that number 48 and number 43 may be just a little time-consuming, I've had a request to take a short break. It's now showing 8:01. Why don't we do nine minutes to 8:10? How's that? Okay? We'll be back in here at 8:10. It's now 8:02.
Mr. Marino, did you want to start this one?
No.
No. Oh, you're going to start it?
Yes.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, are you ready, Ms. Marino? Last week, I was unable to attend a meeting, and I was watching the meeting. I was ill, and I was lying there in my bed. And the discussion took place about two out-of-state trips per year, per council member. And Ms. Carson, I believe, came, you had, came up with one, and then, I don't know if anybody, what happened to it, that only two could take place, and then, after that, it went to discretionary funds, and there wouldn't be a vote on it. That is what I'm going to propose. Reason being, a couple of things. When I went to the Liquor Authority meeting last week, I was bombarded by some citizens in the audience, and by a couple of members on the board, that were extremely upset about how many trips that some council members were taking, and the cost to the citizens. And one lady, who I have tremendous respect for, that's been around forever, asked me, Kathy, whatever happened to the policies that we put in place when the Citizens Advisory Committee had been placed? I think you were on it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And it was limited to one. And somehow, it went to two. And now, if you're on steering committees, it could be up to five. And I'm not pointing my finger at anybody, but the citizens are tired of this spending. And I'm here to propose that. But something I also wanted to add, that I really thought was good piece of this, was the part when the city pays for a dinner, and you do not get adequate time that you will not be there. Mr. Flannery, do you recall two years ago, when you and I and Tom Akers were at a table of 10? And the gentleman at the podium announced Commerce City's table, and announced my name, and I had to stand up while they announced six other council members' names. And it was one of the most embarrassing times, and I will always remember that. And this is really good that we have this in place. And if anybody else has anything to say, that's fine. But this is what I really feel needs to take place.
Mr. Marino?
Just to follow up on Councilwoman Teeter's request, there's, I guess, some feeling that last week, we missed the mark. That we reviewed the travel policy, but we didn't make it maybe as prohibitive or stringent that we intended. You know, there was an exception made, if you're on a policy committee, you know, those meet up to two times more per year than what you're allotted in the city budget. And to Councilman McElhany's point that he made last week, there really is no predictability for city staff to figure out how much to appropriate in the legislative budget for travel, because every time something comes up, we're coming back to council and asking for them to approve another trip. So, it's my belief, and I think among the citizens, that this council needs to live within its means. Every citizen in Commerce City does it, every family in Commerce City does it. And I think it's time for us to show them that we can do it, too. So, Councilwoman Teeter's proposal is that we limit out-of-state travel to two trips per year. That could include the National League of Cities conferences that we go to. It could include something else, to be honest, but you're limited to two. And you, as a mature council member, are responsible for making that decision. So, I think it's a good proposal, and I'll support Councilwoman Teeter on it.
Mr. Bullock?
I'm going to not support that, because I could entertain this if Councilwoman Teeter wasn't going off council. During the time that she's been on council, and before, before NOISE incorporated their trips to just the NLC conferences, NOISE had conferences out of sequence with the NLC. And Councilman Teeter never failed to go to NOISE.
Okay. Ms. Teeter? He has the floor.
Okay. When you bring it down to two trips, that's saying that during my last calendar years, my last two or three calendar years, I've only gone to NLC, no CML, I've only taken two out-of-city trips, which, when you consider out-of-city trips, going to Vail or Breckenridge are out-of-city trips. You know, I could, I would really entertain this if it wasn't seeming like a punitive issue in the case that it's a councilperson going off council, and has been on council for eight years, and this has never been the subject that was brought up. I'm on a steering committee because I want to be on a steering committee. For you to say, I think that you should only go to two trips, you know, what you're saying is, this is what I think you should do as a councilperson. You should limit yourself to what I limit myself to. If you don't want to do more, I didn't want to do more, so you shouldn't have to do more. And then, you're limiting the city to say that we should only be as good as the weakest link here. You know, if we were all going to be weak links and not do anything, if we were going to be the first ones to arrive and the first ones to leave, I could understand this, but we aren't. There are people that go above and beyond every day in what they do around the city, and we don't limit them to that. So, for you to say, okay, now, I'm going to be leaving council, and I think the policy should now be just two trips, and this might be a detriment to council, that people don't decide they don't go to CML, or they don't go to NLC in Washington, and there's no lobbying done, or people that do go are ill-equipped to lobby, then, all of a sudden, the city moves backwards, or we aren't moving forward. And I don't think we will ever move backwards, but we can always achieve more.
Okay.
Don't be restrictive on my achievements, just because you were restrictive on yours.
Okay. And just for information, there were two councilpeople who also agreed with this, who are going to be on council for two more years. So, the fact that Ms. Teeter spoke first, before Mr. Marino or Ms. Carson, shouldn't be the determining factor on who's pushing this. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. I would point out that in the council policy CP2 that we just now adopted, in paragraph, I guess it's A7, council members will endeavor, well, we're going to leave that out, council members will emphasize training for staff, council, and board and commission members. So, if somebody like Mr. Bullock wants to take up his time to be on a steering committee, it's not easy to get on a steering committee. If he wants to take up his time to do that, to go through that training, I don't understand why he should be penalized for that, when he's complying, maybe more than anybody else on the council, with this A7 requirement, that council members will emphasize training for staff, council, and board and commission members. Because if we're not going to live up to this number seven, we ought to repeal it, get it off the books. But I guess what I would, I guess what's on the table right now, is that we would go two out-of-state trips, like that would be the two NLCs normally, plus CML, which is in-state. Is that what we're talking about right now?
Plus IC.
That's what we're talking about. I would add to that, one steering committee meeting, if a person has the ability and has been appointed to a steering committee. Because I don't think, I think being on a steering committee, you know, I know that Ms. Snyder has emphasized to us, probably eight or 10 times over the last four years, when she goes to these steering committee meetings, and how valuable they are to her and her service on this council, and to this city. So, either they are, or they aren't. And I believe when Ms. Snyder says that, that they are valuable to this city. It's not easy to get on a steering committee. Mr. Bullock is on one or two. I think that we should at least pay for one trip to be on that steering committee, because it enhances the reputation of our city, to have a person on a steering committee, just like we had Ms. Snyder on the, what was the steering committee that you were on?
Public Safety, Crime, Transportation.
Public Safety and Transportation, I think it was.
Crime.
Crime, okay. So, I think that was great. But I don't think we should cut that out right now, for one reason or another, just to save a few pennies. You know, we've got things involving millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars in this budget. And to try to start looking at pennies, relative pennies, not pennies, but just relative pennies, relative to a $50 million budget, is just misplaced and inappropriate. I think that maybe some decrease in that is warranted, but not to the extent that's been proposed by Ms. Teeter. I would ask that that be amended, to allow for one steering committee meeting. And I guess it could be amended at any time by the council. If somebody came to the council and had a real need to go to a meeting, the council could take a vote on it. We can take a vote on that at any time, to have the city pay for a trip, if we think it's really going to be helpful to the city. Otherwise, you would use your discretionary funds. But that would be an amendment I would propose, that we add one steering committee meeting a year.
Ms. Carson?
I certainly don't want to drag this discussion out. It is, yes, I fully agree with Ms. Teeter. I have heard from citizens about the amount of travel, when they feel that they're lacking in the city, and agreed it is a lot more costly to put a park in than to travel. But not to take anything away from anybody, but the problem comes to this, it's my understanding, and I think I'm correct, that there are seven different steering committees in NLC. So, if all seven of us decided we wanted to achieve and get ourselves on a steering committee, that's a minimum. If that, those councilpeople attended NLC both times a year, we're looking at 32 trips a year. We earlier this year had the problem with looking like favoritisms were being put out there. So, when you say one steering committee, does that mean one per the whole council? Does that mean? I don't want to go down that road. I think that it, two out-of-state, you figure out what your out-of-state is. I would add to it within the U.S., plus CML, plus your discretionary funds, and I think council members could make that work. NLC, I think, is a viable thing out there, but I do believe that the burden of this falls on cities. NLC needs to figure out something else. Why is it the individual cities that are ending up putting out the price for this? Because they actually benefit from these steering committees. I'm not going to say the city, I just would hate to say that it doesn't come back to the city. I think that individual councilmember, their knowledge may be increased in this and that. But in order to say that we are going to allow this, then that means, then, Mr. Bullock, you're the one that said overachiever. If we end up with seven overachievers on here, then what do you do? I just think that the spending does need to come in, that it's, I would support Ms. Teeter, as long as she would add within the U.S.
Ms. Teeter?
Mr. Bullock, you're very fortunate that I was not chosen to speak right after you did, because I am going to try to show you with some respect, because you were very disrespectful to me. You, I believe, were one of my alternates for traveling to NOISE, and so was Mr. Jakewood. Out of the four years of travel, or five or six that it was, I went one time, and that was to San Francisco, and I choose anybody to pull those travel records. And for me being an underachiever, which you more or less suggested that I was, I was back home running a business, paying taxes, and serving the community. And I think, I take offense of what you said to me, and you owe me an apology. And I'm not focusing on it now, because I'm leaving council. In the beginning, all of us were quite shy and timid, and I just think that if it goes to the new council, they would have been like me and shame on me. Maybe the first two or three years, I was afraid I would hurt a friend that asked to go on a special trip. And I have courage now, and more knowledge, and I'm a stronger person, and that is why I'm going in the direction I am. Thank you.
Mr. McElhany?
Thank you. Without repeating comments that others have made, I think Ms. Carson made a great summation of my thoughts as well. You know, no disrespect to anybody that sits on one of the policy committees, but the bottom line is, as Ms. Carson said, I have yet to see direct evidence of how that policy committee benefits the city. There is little direct evidence that those, participation in those efforts actually come back and translate into programs, projects, or otherwise. It certainly helps to develop the individual in question, and for that, I'm very, very supportive. Training doesn't take place only at NLC, and there have been many comments made over the last two weeks about this concept of overachiever, in context of only going to NLC to beget training. I can come up with a list of training that I've taken through any number of other means that didn't necessitate getting on a plane and going to DC, or one of the other locations. So, on the NLC topic, my first year to, first year on council, attended NLC, it was a great experience, but here was my objective opinion, as a citizen, and fresh to the council function. NLC, you don't need to go to NLC to lobby, right? We don't have to pay to stay in DC for a week, pay to go, to pay for the NLC registration to go lobby. If there's a matter of importance to this community, and we need to lobby, we're going to lobby. We're going to sit down with our elected official when they're in town, or we're going to send a delegation to DC to do business. To suggest that the only way and time that we can lobby is through NLC is asinine. Second, when I look at other communities, in my year that I attended NLC, the majority, if I look at the neighboring communities around us, not one of those communities sent all of their delegation to NLC. We made a commitment about my second year on council, to decrease formally the number of councilmembers that attend NLC, as an example. And yet, every year since, we've had a clamoring to get on the NLC trip. And each of those times, I've taken myself out of the rotation, because I can't put myself in that category to say, everybody has to go to NLC. Makes no sense to me. It's a poor expenditure of dollars. So, you know, I made comments to that effect last week about limiting the attendance. That fell on deaf ears. I think limiting the number of trips is a great tool, and I would support the motion made by Ms. Teeter, and supported by the others in comments so far.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
Just quickly, I speak from a position of someone that does serve on one of those steering committees for National League of Cities. And what I've found in my experience is that, is it beneficial? Sure. But what I, where I've found it's beneficial is to the National League of Cities, and not necessarily Commerce City. You are there in that, in that meeting, in that retreat that they have twice a year, to shape the National League of Cities federal priorities, not Commerce City's. So, in my view, yeah, it is professional development, sure, but as Councilman McElhany referenced, there are plenty of opportunities here at home to get professional development, through the Colorado Municipal League, through Dr. Cog. I just think now is the time that we need to make a good faith effort, on behalf of our citizens, to say, you live within your means, we're going to live within ours, we're going to limit the number of times that we travel out of state, we're going to save the city some money, and we're going to put that money to good use.
Mr. Bullock?
I would agree to give Ms. Teeter an apology, if I really owed her one.
Yeah, let's stay on pace.
Okay, I'm speaking on topic, and I'm going to speak and not be interrupted. First of all, to get on a steering committee, on most of the NLC steering committees, you have to be on the committee first. You have to achieve at least the gold in your standing, which, if you don't have it, you aren't going to get on a committee. And then, you go from there, and then you have to do in-center, in-city mentoring, and show capabilities where they want you on the steering committee, because a lot of people apply, and only few are chosen. So, it isn't, there's no time at all, or there ever going to be any seven to nine people on this council, ever on steering committees. The most there will ever be is one or two, because nobody...
No, no, wait. Please. You have the floor, Mr. Bullock.
Okay, three, because Ms., there's three of us on steering committees right now.
It's actually more than that.
There's steering committees, and there are executive committees. They're two different things, and I will bring the sheet next week to show you the difference between the two.
We don't need that.
Okay.
Thank you.
But see, that's just it. There are people that are, don't know the distinction between the two. What it took for Ms. Snyder to get on a steering committee was a lot of time and commitment on her own time. What it took for me to get on a steering committee was time and commitment on my own time, and going to classes, which a lot of us don't do here. We go out to NLC, and we do everything else except go to the classes that would benefit the city. There are classes on, from everything, from evaluation to economic development. And just like the people would say, well, I already know all this. Well, really, you don't. You know enough to be dangerous, but you really don't know all of this. Because the evaluation procedure would have never been changed with the three people that came on this council, if you knew enough. If you look back now, if you really want to talk about spending money, I've got a full record from 2007, 2008, and 2009, on how much you spent on consultants. And these are consultants to facilitate evaluations and everything, and we, you spent close to $500,000. But no time during that time, did I hear anybody on this, even when the citizens were grumbling about too many consultants, did I see anybody on this council say, let's cut out Dr. Mathis, let's cut out Mr. Daniels. And I've got the records, and I've got the receipts of everyone, and how much they were paid when they came to town. It was, it took council, when three other people came on, to rein that in. And you can shake your head, Jason, but I do have the numbers, and I have when they went off.
Wait for my turn.
So, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to be saying that I understand how the citizens can say that there's a lot of spending being done, but if you're going to rein in spending, let's rein it in all together. If we look at how much we spend on consultants now, and these are consultants that are directly related to city council, it's not even one-tenth as much as it was before. So, council has reined in spending. Now, if it's going to be a punitive mission for this council to sit in judgment and say, this is what we're going to do as a policy committee, that's quite all right. We can always reevaluate policy when the council changes over.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. And I agree generally with what Mr. Bullock had to say. I mean, it's a matter of consistent behavior, over a period of several years, where decisions have been made to spend half a million dollars. And here we are, talking about, that we're wasted, essentially. Here we are talking about relative pennies, and we're spending a lot of time talking about relative pennies. We're talking about, as I see it right now, one trip a year, not for nine people, because nine people don't have the time, they don't have the inclination to get on a steering committee. I'm not on a steering committee. This wouldn't apply to me at all. But there are some people that want to do more, there are some people that don't want to do more, there are some people that have the time to do more, some people who don't have the time to do more. And I don't think that those who have the inclination and the time should be penalized by those who don't want to do more. As I said, we don't have nine people going to these meetings. Local training, I do that also. I go to my classes at NLC, but I also go to local CML training. I mentioned one that's coming up November the 3rd, on quasi-judicial proceedings. I hope to be able to go to that, if I'm not engaged in some other kind of training. But I do go to local training. I go to the Dr. Cog training sessions. So, whenever those are available, I'm there, trying to do my job for the city. And you know, as far as tangible proof of benefiting the city, that's hard to, it's intangible, and I'd like to ask, you know, for ICSC, we send about five or six people to ICSC, what tangible benefit have we achieved by sending people to ICSC for the last five, six years? What businesses have we been, I know somebody said at the King Supers opening, that ICSC has something to do with the King Supers. Well, it did not. As far as I know, it didn't have anything to do with King Supers. I don't know why that was even brought up. But what tangible benefit have we gotten out of ICSC? We do it because it benefits the city in the long run. And that's why this should be approved also, because I think, having, given a person one time a year, if they can get on a steering committee, which is difficult, at best, to go to a steering committee meeting, it should be something that we can embrace and support. And if I vote against this, it's only because of that issue. I think there ought to be one more trip, if a person is on a steering committee.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm sorry if some of you don't feel that there is, that there's any benefit of being on an NLC steering committee. You know that I respect all of you and your opinions, but I have to tell you that I know that there's benefit to being appointed to these committees. I would encourage anyone sitting up here to get in contact with Sam Mamet, who is the president of the Colorado Municipal League, and he will tell you why he feels there's value in council members from across the state of Colorado to be involved in NLC policy. value in council members from across the state of Colorado to be involved in NLC policy and steering committees. The last time I went to Public Safety Crime Prevention, we were working on policy, and in fact, we even had an opportunity to have a conference call with the President of the United States and to be involved in discussion about some things that were going on. And so those are opportunities where Commerce City's at the table. We said who we were and where we were from, and Commerce City's at the table, which in the past, we haven't always had that, and I think that's important. I have come back and made presentations to the council. I've worked with our police and our fire departments on things, and I closed an animal shelter that was abusing animals in this town with knowledge that I gained from being on this steering committee. It's an honor to be chosen. You do have to work hard. You have to attend a lot of classes. You do have to put in the time. And you get in there and you fight with city councils from all across the United States to get those few positions that are available, especially at the steering committee level. So yes, it's an honor to be at the table and to help set federal policy. I wanted to get out and do these things, the extra things that I did, because I wanted to be the very best councilperson for this town that I could be.
Mr. McAdonny.
Man, I would kill for this council to spend this amount of time, blood, sweat, and tears on actually affecting policy or things that move the ball forward. But hey, this matters too, how we spend our money, whether it's half a million dollars a year or $1,000 here and there on a trip. The point about consulting, for the gentleman that made the comments regarding how and when those dollars were spent, there were clearly discussions that he was not part of as a matter of not being on council at that time, that spoke to the frustrations of council and that there were smarter, better ways to do so. And as a result, Ms. Roeder and I brought forward the policy that we ultimately implemented, and we intentionally delayed the vote on that policy until this council was seated so that this council could have a hand in taking that step forward. Relative to ICSC or any of these things, the sheer fact that we are there certainly has benefit. Of these, what we can provide direct quantification of or a direct connection to, the benefit to the city, I guess that is part of the challenge, right? Part of the challenge with ICSC is that much of what gets discussed is not yet public domain, so you can't jeopardize those transactions. To the extent that the information can be discussed, that's brought forward in a presentation ultimately contributed to, by the attending council members, and brought forward by the Economic Development Department. I guess the bottom line with this is, and Mr. Moreno put it very succinctly, the community, our community members have a budget. They put a box around what they're able to spend, based on the dollars going in and the dollars going out. We're effectively asking for a policy that gives us a blank check on travel. I'm all for having some folks do a lot and some folks do relatively less. But what I want us to get to is a defined dollar amount that we will allocate toward travel. Is that five trips? Is that two trips? Is it one per person? Is it nine for one and none for everybody else? I don't care. I want a dollar amount that we commit to as a council that we're going to spend on travel. And guess what? As a council, we need to determine how best to allocate those dollars. It shouldn't be a debate about the two trips, three trips, four trips per person. It's a matter of, let's allocate X dollars toward travel as a council, do our very best to stay within that, make sure that where we're going and why we're going have the greatest impact on our community, and be able to stand up and say so without hesitation. It's, I don't see it as any more complicated than that. So I'm suggesting that we move past this discussion about number of trips. We identify a reasonable dollar allocation that can be used toward council travel and agree that the policies that we've discussed over the past weeks can be used to help support how we allocate those dollars through the year.
Mr. Bullock.
In continuing on what Mr. McAdonny said, last week, I asked for my travel to the steering committee to be in the legislative budget. Is that correct, Mr. Flannery? And it was placed in the legislative budget for the trips that I would make for NLC steering committee. In the policy we just passed, council policy number two, in the very first page, general number two says, "Council members will endeavor to provide leadership and participate in local, regional, state, and federal programs and meetings." We just passed that. We passed that no less than a half an hour ago, and now we're coming up, we're going to contradict the same policy. In that same, council members will endeavor, and the word endeavor is being taken out, to attend numerous meetings in addition to regular council meetings. What I don't understand is, we're discussing how we get ahead by taking away, but we don't ever discuss how we fall behind by people not participating. There are non-participators on this council that sit up here and speak eloquently about how we should be structuring our budget. And I understand that completely, and I understand, in my case, I'm different from them. I'm not asking you to take and say, "Okay, everybody goes everywhere." If you want to limit it to two trips for everyone, and that's going to be your council policy starting today, my legislative budget has my steering committee in it. It's in the legislative budget. We can put this policy forth and then, but don't punish me because of what you don't do. As far as noise, we would have been receiving a lot more money from noise if the people that were before Ms. Teeter had have recognized the fact that if we'd have put the monitors in Commerce City instead of in Thornton, if we'd have been at the table at that meeting, we would be having, when we're not at the table, we lose. And this council, there's a lot of people sitting on this council that have to go back in order to come forward and find out why we're at the table now and why we go to all these things. The money we receive from a lot of different groups is because we are sitting there. And for you to say, "Let's take it away," is a detriment not only to the people that are sitting up here, but it's to the city.
Mr. Benson.
And I'd like to ask if, and I certainly do, I agree with Mr. McAdonny, that ICSC is a worthwhile endeavor. I was just asking rhetorically, what tangible benefit have we received? I don't think we have received any tangible benefit. I think we've received a lot of intangible benefit, making contacts. You continue to knock on the door, finally, the door opens. But is ICSC included in the two out-of-state trips? Or is that, is that one of the things that's excluded? Maybe I missed that. I know we have certain exceptions in here, but I would say that that should be excluded from the two-trip maximum.
It is excluded.
It is in there? Okay.
If I could just add a point of clarification, I believe, sir, that that is funded out of the economic development budget, not out of the legislative budget, and that's why it's not part of the discussion.
Okay, good. And it should be. That's a worthwhile endeavor. I hate to use the word endeavor, but that's what it is. And I would certainly agree with Mr. Bullock on what it states in A2. Council members will provide leadership and participate in local, regional, state, and federal programs and meetings. A6, council members will attend numerous meetings in addition to regular council meetings. Seven, council members will emphasize training for staff, council, and board and commission members. And if we're going to, if we're going to pass something like this, we need to amend this council policy CP2, because there are two inconsistent documents at that point. In other words, we're going to tell you to do these things, and then we're going to tie your feet together and say, "You can't travel to do these things." But that's all, I'm through.
That were all we true. Mr. McAdonny.
For the sake of theatrics, that makes a great point. The policies in CP2 speak to endeavoring to participate in meetings at the state, federal, and other level, hence the funding that we've all agreed needs to occur to get folks into these meetings, within reason. The other policy cited in CP2 about endeavoring to attend the various meetings doesn't specify these need to be meetings that require a plane ticket. There are any number of other activities that are happening locally. So let's get over all that, and let's come up with a policy that adults can adhere to that limits within reason the dollars that we allocate to our travel. Certainly, there will be times where something might come up that we didn't plan for, and we need to get somebody to. And I think we're going to find a way to do so. So the policy needs to simply provide guidance to how we program our budget, not nitpick about what meetings we can and can't go to, or if you're not flying out of country or out of state, that you're not actually contributing to the council. That's not the intent of this policy.
I've been running over in my mind whether he even wanted to bring this up. When I came on council, I started a citizens community on travel. We came up with what the citizens thought was a great idea, which we have thrown out. Mr. Moreno, Ms. Carson, Ms. Teeter are trying to put back to where it was. Because I brought that forward, that was my first recall by members of council, which, you know, just brings all of it, all that history back up. We've got to get back in line where we're being more fiscally responsible, and we are not. I, you know, I'm, you know, everybody says, "Oh, talk to Sam Mamet." Sam Mamet has talked to me in the past about NLC, and his thing is, "I don't understand how you can get everybody here." I don't understand how you can justify that.
Are you talking about Washington?
Washington, yeah, right now, talking about Washington. So, and that's, and going to Mr. McAdonny, every time for seven years now that I've had a problem with my state or my federal representative, I called him up on the phone, and I rode all the way to Lakewood to talk to him, by himself, not in a hallway. Not that I don't think we should go to Washington, but throwing nine people into a closet to talk to some third assistant secretary to the secretary doesn't cut it. Right now, we just need to get a motion in there. We need to work on that and work on it. I would like to go to Mr. Moreno for it and Ms. Teeter to second it, if that's okay.
I, I'm not opposed to making a motion. My issue is that I think Councilman McAdonny brought up a very good point in the sense that we need predictability in our budget. And the fact that we limit it to two conferences, out-of-state conferences a year, doesn't provide that. There's still fluctuations on how much each thing is going to cost. So if we figure a dollar amount to what we do, which I've been doing the math on our legislative budget now, would roughly amount to $8,000 per council member, that includes CML, that includes the two out-of-state conferences, whatever you might choose to go to, let's just leave it at a number. Let's give the staff predictability in the legislative budget, and let's move on from there. And if that means that, it means that you budget accordingly. You're in charge of your own budget. If you want to attend another out-of-state conference, then you find within that means of doing it. And maybe that means you, that anyone taking a few less cabs, maybe that means I'm taking public transportation. But you budget accordingly. And I think that, that should be the proposal, is a fixed dollar amount for each person for travel. That number for CML and the two out-of-state conferences is, as I mentioned, $8,000.
Mr. Flannery, you might not have an answer for that. How would the $8,000, $72,000 for the year compared to what we did or have been set up to sell? Just, I know that's not a number you just can pull out of the hat, but do you get a feel that it could be lower or higher or about the same?
I would say that's, I would say that's probably pretty close to the average. I don't know how the average, you figured it, but I would say it's somewhere in that range of 60 to 90, so that's probably right in the middle.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, just for where you got those numbers, what did they look like?
So I took up the legislative budget. I looked at the total appropriated amount for like an NLC in DC. That number for next year's budget is $26,500. That's based on an estimate of eight people. You divide that, $26,500 by eight people, that amounts to $3,312. You look at CML, $9,000, that's for nine people. That means $1,000 is attributed to the CML conference. Same with the NLC in the fall, estimated at four people, that's $12,000, that's $3,000 per person. You add those together, that's $3,000 plus $3,000 plus $1,000. I actually overestimate that, $7,000.
And the other challenge is, you're dividing that $1,000 for, or the, the one for the fall NLC, but you're giving that amount of money to all nine people, even though you're only sending four?
That's correct, but that would be based on, that's your allotted amount for the entire year.
Okay, okay. We're going, do we, do we have anybody from outside who's going to be doing anything on the next couple items? Because this is, you know, we're now almost an hour past where we're supposed to be, and I know we always say it's estimates, but we still don't have 43 done.
I don't have any trouble.
We can finish this one real quick. If Mr. Moreno would just amend his $8,000 to $9,000, and I will agree with that. I will totally agree with it, and I will stay within my budget for my steering committee, and I will make sure that between that $9,000 and anything I need to do with discretionary, that would be my budget and everything. So if you would amend that $8,000 to $9,000, we can take a vote, we can get off this one, we can go to the one that you wanted to do first, and we can go to the next quality community.
I'm a little, I'm sorry, I'm a little taken aback by this look that Councilman Benson is giving me. I would, I would ask for other councils' opinion before we decide on that. I can't, I'll just wait. I'll withhold comment until we have discussion on that.
Okay. And the only one who's not on this list right now is me. So Ms. Teeter first.
I would go in between $8,500, and I do want to put a vote...
He was at $7,000.
Oh, I thought you said eight.
Eight.
Did I misunderstand?
It was eight, if you're just taking it up to, rounding up.
Okay.
I'd propose $8,500 then, and discretionary funds if needed.
Mr. Moreno.
So in terms of a proper motion we're looking at, right?
I'm sorry?
Is that a motion?
Not yet. We're still in discussion.
So I would move that we amend the council policy on travel, CP number five, to state that each council member per calendar year is allotted $8,500 for travel. And I won't go into discretionary, because we already have a policy on that, and that's not applicable to this. But I think that's...
Mr. Geller, with your guidance, if that would work?
So if we do the motion now, and I get a second on your motion, then the rest of these people who are still on here will talk during discussion? Is that okay?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I have a motion from Mr. Moreno. I have a second from Mr. Bullock.
I was supposed to second.
Okay.
Second the motion?
Ms. Teeter will second it.
Should I read it?
When do we go into discussion? Because my board is still lit up.
Okay. Might be good if I read the motion, if I understood it.
That would be good.
Okay, we're talking about subparagraph B on page one of the, of CP 5. We're talking about subparagraph B on page one of the, of CP five. Okay, it would read, unless otherwise approved by council, authorized events shall mean those events budgeted in the city budget for attendance by members of the city council not to exceed a total of $8,500 per council member per calendar year.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Geller, may I add language that states, just to be clear, additional travel unless used with discretionary funds is not acceptable?
Yeah. When it says budgeted in the city budget for those, for travel, it does not mean discretionary funds. That's in addition.
Right.
Discretionary funds are, are separate, and you have a separate council policy on that. Is that, did I answer your question?
I, I guess, I wanted to include language that will deter the practice of if you overspend your budget, that you're going to come back to council and ask for an additional appropriation.
That was what I wanted to be put in place, too.
We're not undermining the discretionary fund policy with this travel policy, are we?
No.
I mean, that's beyond me. So, what we're talking about here is just budgeted items for travel. Is that right?
Yes. So, with your language, if you could add, additional funds for travel will not be permitted beyond the 8,500.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Does the motion maker accept the amendment? I guess you would since you made it.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock, accept the amendment?
Yeah. Oh, I didn't second it. Ms. Teeter seconded it.
No, but we had a new amendment since then. Or, Ms. Teeter, I'm sorry, Ms. Teeter, do you accept the amendment? Okay, I have a motion and a second. City Attorney, do you need to read it again or?
I'll be glad to. It says unless, this is B, unless otherwise approved by council, authorized events shall mean those events for training and travel budgeted in the city budget for attendance by member, members of the city council not to exceed a total of $8,500 per council member per calendar year.
Okay. Motion and a second. Do I have three people on here? Is that for discussion? Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Did you have something additional, Mr. Marino?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I will be, I'll support this at what we have it at now. And I would just wanted to clarify, just quickly clarify that my statement about Sam Abbott was not about the trip to Washington DC for lobbying. It was simply about the NLC steering policy and steering committee meetings only.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, just to clarify, the legislative budget will include $8,500 a year per council member. Is that a correct statement?
For training and travel.
For training and, right. All right. I'll support that, too.
Motion and a second. The attorneys read the title. I don't see any further discussion. Do we need a voice vote or roll call?
Voice.
Voice. Sir?
If someone asks for a roll call or voice vote, it's appropriate.
Does anybody need one? Not seeing one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion passes. On to 43, discussion from council. If there is no discussion, I'd be open for a motion. Mr. McElDowney?
Move to approve resolution 2011-48?
Forty-three.
I'm sorry, 43.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2011-43. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. On to study session items. Mr. Flannery, staff to come forward?
I'd like to ask Mr. Tinklerberg to come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. We have a presentation by Quality Community Foundation Board Member Daniel O'Leary.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry we held you up.
Council members, thank you. My name is Daniel O'Leary. My address is 15935 East 97th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado. I have served on the Quality Community Foundation Board for two years, and my term expires in 2012. And I want to start by saying thank you for your support, your leadership, and your commitment to Commerce City. The mission of the Quality Community Foundation, our mission statement reads as, "The Quality Community Foundation mission is to improve the quality of life in Commerce City for its residents and nonprofit organizations." Our current members are Debbie Mitchell, our president, Roger, Roger Tinklerberg, our secretary, treasurer, myself, Daniel O'Leary, Brian Bernhardt, Shannon Morales, Kyle Sickman, and Carol Taylor Boyd. And I also have a request in front of me to remove Andrew Goard for lack of attendance. He has not attended a meeting in the past 18 months. And also Julie Martinez for lack of attendance, the same thing. She hasn't attended a meeting for the past 18 months.
Did you want action at this time or after, at the end of your presentation?
I was told I can present it. I wanted to make sure that I made it aware right now, and then I can present it to you after, then it can be signed, correct?
Do you want to do it after or you want to do it now?
Take action on it?
Yeah.
When he's finished with this presentation, would it be okay to go ahead and make a motion and take action, City Attorney? Okay, great. Go ahead, sir. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Thank you very much.
I was just going to suggest that since this is listed as a study item, we bring that up during administrative council business, but either way is fine.
Yep. Okay.
The objectives of the Quality Community Foundation are to build capacity of our nonprofit organizations that serve in Commerce City. Also, to improve awareness of the Quality Community Foundation, getting our name out to the public, letting the citizens know kind of what we do out there. And also to provide a nonprofit academy, which will help teach the nonprofits in our community how to fish and to fish for other alternatives of funding and improve their grant writing skills. We also are in the process of creating an advisory board, improve access to volunteerism. So, getting, we have groups that are requesting volunteers, and we have people who want to volunteer in our community. How do we get those two groups together so we can serve the needs of our, our citizens and the groups that function within our city? We also are looking to increase our online presence and looking at additional fundraising opportunities. We, we've discussed working with Run With The Buffalos, which just happened this past weekend. And in the future, how can we turn that into a fundraising event that could ultimately create a new scholarship for an additional student in Commerce City? And how can we give, use that opportunity to help make additional money for the schools or other nonprofits that serve within Commerce City? Our accomplishments to date are, we have provided two nonprofit meetings for potential Quality Community Foundation grantees. One was last Wednesday, and the, and the last one was this past Saturday. We had, we had actually 26 groups attend the meeting training. We provided grant and scholarship information at the Neighborhood Outreach. We began the process of creating an advisory board. We also created an attendance policy, and we, we began a relationship with the Cultural Council, which then we will reach out to other councils within Commerce City to see how we can help them fundraise or network them through some of our folks that we work with. Okay? Annual programs, the Quality Community Foundation Golf Tournament. Also, we have the Quality Community Foundation Scholarship Program and the Quality Community Foundation Grant Program. In 2011, the golf tournament was held on June 30th, 2011, at the Buffalo Run Golf Course. We had 24 teams that participated. We had a hole-in-one winner, and they received the Quality Sound System from O'Meara Ford. The profits from the golf tournament were $6,043, and the chairperson for the golf tournament is Kyle Sickman. In 2011, the scholarship program, application and information are available, and they are currently available at Adam City High School, Prairie View High School, Lester Arnold High School, Commerce City Rec, Bell Creek Rec, Reunion Rec, and, and currently on the city website. It will be available through press release starting in February 2012. Okay? And I currently serve as the chairperson for the scholarship committee. Scholarship history funded through the golf tournament proceeds, from 2003 to 2011, we've awarded $25,000 scholarships. Six graduated, seven currently attending, and 12 have forfeited. The grant program, two pre-application meetings for potential Quality Community Foundation grantees were held, and like I stated, last Wednesday and this past Saturday. 26 organizations attended the meetings. Applications and information are available through the Civic Center, online, and through press release. Funding provided by the legislative budget, which is what you approved. And the grant chairperson would be Shannon Morales. In 2011, and this is what we did last year, in 2011, $145,000 was awarded to 28 nonprofit organizations who provided services to Commerce City residences. All applicants that applied did receive some kind of award. Okay? And we put some numbers together. Residents that those grants served were 14,274 adults, 20,325 youth, and 1,744 senior citizens or disabled. And, and also note that some of those received multiple services. Okay? And I guess this is where if I will take any questions or comments.
Mr. Bullock?
I know that we're going to take action to remove the two people. Do you want us also to take action to publicize that you need more volunteers for this committee?
I think we're currently working through somebody for that right now, so I would hate to tell you yes, and then have somebody duplicate an effort or somebody that's currently working on that. We also are working out, during some of the functions that we've held and we've had a booth at, we're taking names. We're, we're looking for people who want to be part of this committee. So, I, I think kind of, yes, the answer is definitely, we want people to know about our committee. We want people who are involved. But I think there are actions being taken right now to address the shortage.
Thank you.
Mr. McElDowney?
Mr. O'Leary, thanks so much for the update. These are, these are great, and I look forward to hearing from you guys. What I also like about this update this year is the insights that you guys are starting to include, which is great. So, not unlike the grant history where you're helping us understand how those dollars have been distributed and how those dollars are touching the community, that's, that's great insight and I think a neat way for us to know something beyond the fact that an amount was, was granted at some point. So, it's great to see that, and I am excited to hear how that, or see how this evolves over time. On the, on the scholarship front, that was sad to see the 12 forfeits of those grants. Any, I mean, don't have to answer it now, but I assume you guys are looking at what's, I guess, applicant versus forfeiture, and if there's any common thread there that can be used to help maybe put those dollars in somebody else's hands that might be more likely to, to make it through, or maybe they're just conditions that are outside of their control, so.
Yeah, I think we did address that this year. We were actually able to give a third scholarship to a young lady who, it was really hard to take her out of the equation. And so, we were able to use those funds that were, that we had available to offer a third scholarship this year. So, we did do that. We also, I have been out to the schools, I've offered my services. I actually met with Ms. McKennie down at Adam City High School, and she's a counselor. And, and this is my third visit with her, just to kind of get my name out there if, and we can get quality applicants. I mean, you know, we've, in the past, we've had some applicants not completely fill out the applications. And I think, you know, just being out there in the community, being in the schools, being able to answer those questions and making ourselves available to the students if they have any questions or the parents. And I think we will have quality applicants by actually getting out there and doing some outreach programs with them.
That's great. I think just my closing comment, it's just, my hats off to you and the entire committee, the, or foundation, rather. The, the evolution of this group over the past several years has been fantastic. I think between this group and, and the Cultural Council, I mean, the, the transformation has been fantastic. And so, thank you for the work that you guys do and the time that you guys put into this.
Thank you.
Ms. Teeter?
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Is this the scholarship that you and I discussed?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm in understanding, it's very, very equal between the two school districts. But as you said, not as many from 27J don't apply for these. Any reason why? I know you've done your homework. It shows right here.
No, I, I don't, I don't know if, I think in the past, maybe we didn't go out there and we didn't reach out to the outline areas, 27J. But the last year I did. I made myself available to the counselors and to several of the students. And I think now, I started earlier, and that was a big thing of how do we get quality candidates, more participation, more people who want these scholarships, and getting out there early. Last year, we kind of start this program in February every year, maybe late February, by the time the press releases get out and we get information to the schools, they got maybe a month, maybe 30 to 13 days to get their information into the foundation so we can review those applicants. This year, I started from day one. I was at Adam City, Lester Arnold, and Prairie View before school started and just giving the information out. Hopefully, I could capture some of those seniors before they start their senior year, making, you know, letting some of those students know that there is some resources for them to have, to further their education, and, and not waiting until the end of the year. Maybe they can go into the year thinking, hey, there's an opportunity for me to help fund my education. Let me start right now and, and build that resume, per se, early instead of waiting until the end of the school year.
Yes, and I've always been for both school districts to be treated fairly and equally. And you certainly do that. Thank you for all your hard work. Greatly appreciated, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. I appreciate your report. I certainly agree with Mr. McElDowney and to congratulate you and the rest of the members of the foundation. You do all this work just on your own, your volunteers completely. You don't get $8,500 a year for travel. You don't get any, anything, any compensation at all. And I think it's just very a great thing that you do for our community. And I'll be calling you tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Marino?
Thank you. And after a lengthy discussion about the value of where money is spent, there's no question that we spend, the, the value of spending money here and for this purpose. It's one of the things that when I got on council, I immediately thought, wow, I really admire that, that the city reserves an amount in each budget to give to nonprofit organizations that directly affect the lives of Commerce City citizens. And I think that's great. And so, thank you for your work and for everyone else on the board, what they do.
Thank you. And I commend you because you make it possible. You know, when, last year, when several cities were decreasing their amounts they were given to nonprofits, you increased it. And so, I mean, it, a lot of that goes out to what you guys do behind the scenes and how you make it happen. You didn't take away from our budget for any other thing, so thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Hi, I just wanted to quickly add on to what everyone else is saying, is to thank you and the, the foundation for everything that you do. There are a couple of us on council that were on the Quality Community Foundation for several years, and I was one of them, and I loved it. several years, and I was one of them, and I loved it. And I think that it's so hard because you want to give everybody something. So it's a challenging job, it's a hard job, and you hear some stories that are really, really difficult, and you want to give money to everyone. So I know that it's challenging, and I think it's also very rewarding. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Should I leave this letter? I'm still going to be here, I'm not leaving, but.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Gaylor. And then we're going to take that action during administrative business.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flannery, someone to come forward on the revision of our investment policy?
It'll also be Mr. Tinklinberg.
How did we know that?
He's moving to the podium. Must be serious.
Good evening again. In your packet was the council communication regarding this proposed change. Just basically in shorthand, the investment policy is part of the policies that is adopted each year when the council adopts the budget. It's located in the appendix of the budget document, so if you go to that end of the document, you'll see that item tucked in with all of the other policies. The reason for this requested change is that with the downgrade of the US government by one of the rating agencies, there is the danger of another rating agency doing a downgrade as well, and that would severely limit our options in terms of investments. Also, what we have found is that there are other quality investments that are out there that are AA rated, and we're talking about other public agencies. For example, I think it would be as safe for the city to invest in bonds from one of our neighboring cities, for example. You know, we get a fairly, fairly good picture of what the neighboring cities are going through with their budgets, and so if a Thornton or a Westminster were issuing bonds that were AA rated, for us, it probably would be just as safe to purchase those bonds as it would be to purchase US Treasuries, or Freddie Mac, or Fannie Mae, or any of those type of securities. So that's why we're proposing this change, and basically, it would allow us to then purchase securities issued by other public agencies that are AA rated. This would not apply to commercial bonds. Those have to be AAA, and even when they're AAA, we are very, very cautious, because we know that for a corporation, that rating can change overnight. So we have not invested in corporate bonds that are AAA rated for probably about three years now. The ones that we did have were matured, and we have not reinvested in commercial paper again since then. So if you have your budget book, and some of you have the hard copy, some of you have the paper copy, the investment policy is located on page 314 of the book. That's the new 2012 budget. So that's where the document is located, and we're simply asking for that one change in the investment policy. Now, if I might, also, while we're talking about the budget, I don't have a formal presentation to give you, but you presented the budget tonight, and that is for consideration next week, Monday, when you'll open the public hearing, and then we request that you basically continue the public hearing until the following week, which would be the 24th, at which time then we would ask that you take any further comments that might be coming from the public, close the hearing at that time, and then act on the resolution regarding the budget. There are a few changes in the budget, and I'll just point them out really quickly. The revenues were increased by $30,000, and that's because of anticipating the revenue coming in for reimbursement from other public agencies for the city news. Also, there was a very small increase in the administrative cost, that was only $2,000 change. The largest change on the expense side was in the finance department. That was reduced by over $700,000 because of adjustment to the actual premiums that are coming in from the insurance companies and the salary pool after the contract was negotiated with the AFSCME union. There was a change in the amount of money being transferred to the capital improvement program. It was 807 at the time of the retreat, 807,000. It is now 5,696, and the reason for that is using one-time money, setting that aside for the future payments on the soccer fields, and that was discussed at the retreat. So that's the other significant change. So the general fund budget is now 55 million compared to what was discussed at the retreat of 51 million, and the major change is that change of using one-time dollars, setting that aside for those future soccer field payments. So just in real brief encapsulation, that's, those were the changes in the budget since the retreat. So I kind of shoehorned that in with the discussion of the policy. So again, our request is that you are fine with that policy change, and if so, then it will be adopted when you act on the full budget.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mr. Benson?
Roger, the reason a lot of people purchase public bonds is because they're tax-free. We don't need to worry about that.
Correct.
Generally, they pay a lower yield than commercial bonds.
Correct.
But as you say, we're not investing in any commercial bonds unless they have a AAA rating.
Correct.
Which is better right now than the United States of America.
According to one rating agency, that's correct.
Right. And I've recently done some reading on publicly issued bonds, and they talk about, if you're going to do it, do it in a city that has its own water department, because water's something people have to have, or invest in a water district, because people have to have that. There's very little chance of them going under, because people have to have that service. Have you considered that at all in making a decision? You know, you might have, there might be a rating of AA for a publicly issued bond, but look into the services that the city provides, or the special district or whatever provides, because it seems like, it made a lot of sense to me that the ones that supply things like water, and I can't remember, there were a couple of other examples, but I can't remember. I just recently saw a report on tax-free municipal bonds. But do you think, is that something that is worth considering, to look into the type of services and to see whether they're essential or not?
Yes.
And that would be a better investment?
Yes, that's, that would be one of the criteria we would use for our treasury function, is looking at that type, because that offers a higher level of safety, as you point out.
Right.
The investment policy has three primary objectives. One is safety, the second is liquidity, and then the third is yield, and they're in that priority rank, and so that's why safety is paramount, and that's why, yeah, at this point, we are sticking with public agencies rather than going with corporate, even though corporates would yield more.
Because there are public agencies that are going under, as I understand it. I don't know what the chapter is for municipal bankruptcy, but there are several of those being filed all over the nation, so it can happen, but probably doesn't happen with those that supply what are referred to as essential services.
Those are typically special districts that are developers' established, so it's generally not cities and counties.
Right.
There are, there is one notable exception to that, but they got in a world of hurt by doing credit swaps, and someone tried to interest us in that at one time, several years back, and we said no.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that that's a consideration that we're, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Roger. On those numbers you gave us, the revised number, you said revenue went up by $30,000?
In the general fund, yes.
In the general fund. And finance, was that up or down on that $7,000?
That was a $700,000 reduction.
Oh, $700,000.
And it was a reduction. Let me repeat that. That was a reduction.
Okay, so finance reduced by $700,000.
Over $700,000, yes, sir.
Okay, and we, and the transfer was instead of 807,000, what was the final number? 5 million?
Yes, 5,696,500. Page nine of the budget book.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Moreno?
Roger, the increase there, the 5 million, that won't obviously be paid out in one year, right? It's just reserved from the one time, and then will be made over a series of years?
That's correct. That sets, the amount that was set aside for the soccer payments is not the full 5 million, but it's a major portion of that, and you're correct. It's the lump sum set aside for payments over seven years.
Great, and it just, that means that, the funding of that project will not have to come out of the general fund, we have money reserved for it.
That's correct.
Wonderful, thanks, Roger.
Sure.
I think that's it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to go on executive session. You can read the motion from the item off your agenda. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, move to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B concerning the proposed medical waste disposal facility.
Mr. Mackel Downey? entertain a motion to second, go on executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Okay, we'll be in the council workroom and probably for 30 minutes.
Do you think that'll last?
Well, maybe. When do we ever get out of there? Well, maybe. When do we ever get out of there?
Oh, man, you can see mine.
No, not yet.
I'm looking for it.
We're all wanting to help.
Where are we at now? And then we'll take these.
That's my guess.
I didn't really want to take these till now, but...
Cute. All right. How many of us are out here?
business. Ms. Snyder, do you want to bring up some administrative business on taking two people off of a board?
I apologize. We're all getting tired. Yes, counsel, just as a follow-up to our presentation from the Quality Community Foundation, being that they have two members that have not been there for the last 18 months, I would like to make a motion that we remove Andrew Goad and Julie Martinez from the foundation board.
Okay. Mr. Benson, were you the second? Probably not.
I will say.
One second. Ms. Teeter, second.
Second, the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to remove those two people. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Did you have anything else? No? Okay. No?
Should I mention?
Your call at this point. I wish... Do you want to wait and we'll come back? Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, I had just one issue of administrative council business during the night, and that is I've gotten at least two and maybe three of these postcards announcing the meetings that we're having about the use of the dog track. How many of those are we going to send out?
I'm not sure. I've only received one, so I'm not sure why you got three.
No, I said at least two and maybe three. It may just be two. I know I've gotten two. I know other people who have gotten two. I'm just trying to figure out what does that cost us every time that we send one of those out?
If you... I'll find out for Michelle Halsted and then email you tomorrow morning.
Okay. Because I know we had a discussion about a year and a half ago about the fact that robocalls to announce a date of a meeting were more effective and a lot cheaper than sending out something with postage on it. And I'm just wondering why we haven't followed that. And who is it that does the... Who prepared those mailings? Is that done?
That would be our communications. And I just was told that we've sent two out.
It's what?
We've sent two out.
Okay.
Not three, but two.
No, I said at least two, maybe three. But who prepares that card?
That would be our staff.
It's done in-house?
Communication. As far as putting it together, I don't know. I mean, as far as actually printing it, I'm not sure if that's an outside firm or not.
You know, what would be the reason for using an outside firm?
I don't know, Mr. Benson. I'm not sure.
Well, can we...
I'll find out.
Can you answer that question also?
Yeah, Ms. Halsted's not here at the moment, so I'll find out.
Okay. But you know the questions that I've got.
You bet.
Just wondering how much money we're spending on this. Okay. That's all I have for administrative council business.
Sorry, that was actually to make a motion. No administrative business.
I've got two items I have to address. One is I'll be going off of the... Oops, sorry.
I'm going off the homeless 10-year plan for Adams County in November. I will still be on it through another source, but we're going to need a rep to pick that up after the election. So what my thing is, can we add that board to boards and commissions for the new council? Because this is not one that was a council appointment in the beginning.
Good idea.
But it should be.
It should.
Ms. Snyder and I were both on that particular board, but...
Certainly a good group.
So if we could add that, does anybody in council have a challenge with adding that board in there?
Mr. Mayor, we're putting that together right now to get all that list for the boards, commissions, and committees. Do you know the name of that? Or could you get it to me?
It's called the 10-Year Plan to End Homelessness in Adams County.
10-Year Plan to End Homelessness.
To End Homelessness in Adams County.
In Adams County.
And it's through... Virginia heads that up at Access Housing.
That's two ways.
Well, no, we were kind of feeding off each other. If one could go, then the other one didn't, or...
So maybe like a primary and an alternate or something?
Yeah.
But it is definitely a worthwhile group.
Yeah.
And they're doing great things, so...
And when does it... I can contact her.
Yeah, contact her, because the meetings...
It's like the third...
Yeah.
The third brother's there.
Like once a month.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay. The other one was something on a meeting that I was gone, I was not here on, and it was something Mr. Marino had brought up about a noise ordinance. Do we know where we are on that? For events with live music in the world.
You mean requiring them to come before council?
Or some other alternative.
I think Councilman Teeter brought that up as well. We've reported twice, I think, to council on it, and I think Mr. McBroom has put together a memo, an update on it.
So is that coming in the future? I'm just... Is it coming?
Yes.
Where are we with that? I'm not asking you to do anything right now.
When? Before the end of the year.
Okay. It is now, but it wasn't then. So... But I am... As soon as I'm done, I'll go to you, Mr. Bullock. So, Mr. Marino, you're okay with that?
Yeah, as long as it's brought back for like a study session item to look into alternatives. Great.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
On the calendar that we have before us today, on some of the events that we have coming up, that I really would like to know if they are legislative events, and I think it's going to be, we're going to be... We'll have to expedite some of them. The Stroud Street... Stroud... Wow. Stout Street Foundation Gala, and the tickets are $100 apiece for that. The...
Okay.
Comes out of the 85.
Alternative to Family Violence, Clinica, Tepica Pica Fiesta. Okay. Okay, can you pronounce that for me, please?
Clinica Tepia.
Festival and Fiesta, that's... Those tickets are also $100. These are just events. I'm wondering, are they in our legislative budget for council to attend? Are these events that we have to RSVP for and come out of our discretionary funds? Because I haven't seen that legislative budget for all the events that we are eligible for, and it's becoming the end of the year, and everybody is putting all their events on now. And...
I believe these are mostly for discretionary.
Discretionary.
They haven't been officially budgeted.
I think it is, too.
As part of the budget.
We're the only two to go. So, yeah, they'd all be discretionary. Do you have something else?
No, that was it. So...
If you could give me a reading?
Okay. On that item, Councilman Bullock and Mr. Flannery, if in the future, perhaps when those invites, calendar invitations are sent out, if there could just be like a one sentence that says this is a budgeted item, or this is discretionary.
Okay.
I think it would help council members to budget more appropriately.
Good. Mr. Mayor, I just have one other short thing.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I've heard from a couple of constituents, and they're looking at the... What's happening to Chambers just north of 104th, and it looks like it's being widened on the east side, and they're concerned about how close that's going to come to the backside of their houses, you know, that part of reunion that goes all the way over to Chambers? What can I tell them about where that's going and how wide off of the pavement it's going to the east? What is in the plan for that? Obviously, Chambers needs to be widened, and we've all talked about that, but...
Chambers at 104th?
Yeah, north of 104th.
So that's directly related to the King Supers improvement in the project. I know that Mr. Gaylor is working with the property owners, Lennon, to look at the access, and they have some questions and some issues on the right of way. So it's definitely an active issue that we've been working with them on.
Yeah, if you could get to me and just show what the plan is along... On the east side of Chambers, what the plan is to widen it, to what point?
Okay.
Because I think they have a good point about how close that's going to come.
Mr. McBroom wants to ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
Mr. Benson? Mr. Benson, are you inquiring about the current widening that's occurring for the King Supers store, or the long-term future plan for the widening of Chambers?
Well, I guess I'm not clear where one begins and the other ends. But you can see that there's some bulldozers and stuff down there just north of 104th on Chambers, and it looks like it's taken a wide swath of about maybe 10 or 15 feet on the east side of Chambers. And I think my people are kind of wondering, is this going to go all the way down to Heartland or not? Or how... I mean, we all want Chambers to be widened, we want that sidewalk to be built, and if this is just part of the King Supers... this is just part of the King Supers being built and getting access for them, then that's fine. I'd just like to know what I can tell my constituents who are asking about that.
We can do two things, indicate the current limits of the widening project, but also indicate what the future width of Chambers Road all the way up will be. What's being widened currently is an indication of what the future widening all the way up Chambers would look like.
Okay.
But we can provide those details.
So about how far off the pavement of the existing Chamber, if you know, how far off the pavement would that go?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, we can provide that.
Looks like it's about 15, maybe 20 feet to me, but if you could maybe pinpoint that a little bit more, I'd like to know that, just so I can tell that to people. Because there's a whole row of houses there that are going to be very concerned.
I think that, I don't think that they have a need to be concerned, and Mr. McBroom can probably clarify this for me, but one of the things that Shay did, unique to some of the other builders, is they built out the perimeter of their subdivision to the future street width that the fully widened road would call for. So if we're talking about the piece from Heartland to the south, behind the homes in the back nine, they're already built to their full setback, and the sidewalk is already in place.
And as long as nothing's going to encroach on that, I think we're probably going to be okay.
I mean, I think the safe assumption would be that the future road width would essentially align with the current boundary, the developed boundary of those homes, and that sidewalk, much like it does further to the north along the other neighborhoods like the Reserve and neighborhoods along the full stretch there, so, I mean, that's my read on it, and if past development discussions hold true, those boundaries are set well in advance, and so as a developer comes in, much like happened at the 104th and Chambers Mark Campbell properties, he built his pieces effectively to fit, or each of the developments come in and build to that, that segment of missing road as their property comes in, like Kings is going to do in this case, right?
You are exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marino? Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I just have one question, Mr. Clemens is not here, so hopefully someone can get back to me. On 104th and Highway Two, going eastbound, all these real long, tall, orange, they're bigger than cones, they're like barrels, and it's one lane, almost up to Potomac, not quite, past Turnberry, but I never see anybody working on it, I just see traffic jamming and building up. So if someone can get that information back to me, why that's taking place?
That is that continued warranty work, and I drive through there every day myself and wonder as well, but there have been times, because this came up before, I actually really look hard now, and I've noticed that some areas they have gone in and repaired, and then it's coned off, and so it's curing or whatever, so I'm pretty sure that's what it is now. I haven't seen any specific activity in that area where all those bollards are, but it's mainly the warranty work that they're doing. I'll follow up, though.
Yeah, and I just need, that's what I needed to tell my neighbors and all who have asked me, so if you can follow up to make sure this is correct, thank you, sir.
Okay. Under reports, Mr. Gaylor?
Nothing further.
Mr. Flannery?
Really quick, I don't know how many of you get the Colorado Municipal Magazine, but I'll get a copy if you'd like, but in the back, I just want to blow our horn a little bit, you may recognize Heather Spencer, our HR Director, and they did an article in this month's CML Magazine, and we're featured in there, so big thumbs up to Michelle Halsted and Heather for getting this in there and working with CML, so, it's good stuff, that's it.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, last week, the events I attended was the Business Owner Dog Track Meeting at the Rec Center, started at 12:30 on Tuesday, Metro North Taste of the Chamber Tuesday night, and the Family Tree 11th Annual Denim and Diamonds Ball downtown, and they, Family Tree helps people in domestic abusive and children neglect situations, and it's a really outstanding group that does outstanding work in the metro area. Thank you.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Just a brief planning commission this past week. That's it.
Mr. Diaz?
No report.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, just three events I attended, or boards I sit on, Tuesday afternoon, I sit on the Liquor Authority, Tuesday evening, Metro North Taste of the Chamber, and last Thursday, I attended the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Board Meeting.
Ms. Snyder?
I attended the meet and greet that they had on Saturday over at Reunion in the rain, in the pouring down rain, just wanted to thank everybody that had that, and everyone that came out for it, all of the candidates were out there, and several people from the Reunion area and around our city were there, so I wanted to say thank you for that. And then today, I went and had lunch with a bunch of kindergartners at Hanson Elementary, and that's always an enlightening experience, thanks.
Ms. Carson?
I also attended the meet and greet, but Ms. Snyder, it was actually snowing by the time I got there.
Nice.
And then I wanted to say thank you to all the candidates who I know are working their tails off, thank you for being out there, so the citizens actually can get to know you and make a good judgment of who they want to vote for.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Friday night, we had the football game between Prairie View High School and Green Mountain. Prairie View won 34 to 24, played a very good game. This is going to be my last year doing the PA announcing, even with 10-power binoculars, I have a problem seeing the down marker, and I have a problem seeing numbers that are flying by me at about 20 miles an hour. And this is going to be my last year, even with 10-power binoculars, it's just too much of a, and you can't make mistakes, so, anyway. I was also at the meet and greet on Saturday morning, and of course, Saturday afternoon, to bring you up to date on Texas A&amp;M football, Texas A&amp;M beat Texas Tech in Lubbock. Prior to the game, the Texas Tech fans filled up our team bus with, I'll just call it an animal product, and if you ever go through Lubbock, Texas, go fast and don't drink the water. And that's about it.
Mr. Marino?
Just quickly, the Commerce City Rotary Club has some great activities coming up over the holiday season, one is where we will be delivering dictionaries purchased by the Commerce City Rotary Club to every student in elementary schools in Adams 14. The other is that we have coming up, is over the holidays in December, we do a Heart and Shoes Soul program, where essentially disadvantaged children in Commerce City are purchased what they need to get through the winter, socks, shoes, mittens, hats, anything like that, so if you know of any of those families, please let the Commerce City Rotary Club know, and we'll be sure they get the items they need to get them through the winter. That's all I have.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to announce that our monthly ward meeting is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at Stellato's Deli and Grocery, and we're having a special guest star, Don Quick, and if I continue on in this position, we're going to try to have a special guest star at every ward meeting every month, but tomorrow night is going to be Don Quick. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just one more quick thing, council, anyone who wanted to participate in assisting with their check for the memorial for Bobby Kroll, that would be great, just see me right after council and let me know if you're going to be doing that, thanks so much.
Okay. My is it Blue Ribbon Committee for the Homeless, also at the Dog Track at Rec Center, Taste of the Chamber, we had a full caucus for Metro Mayors, and we had all the big shots there, Governor, and everybody was talking. Let's see, Rack, Regional Air Quality, they're having a really tough time now, because they want to put in all of these air pollution things, and the President said, they're history. So they're trying to find their way, we're probably going to go to not every month meetings since there's no teeth to this. One of the things that I did want to bring up was, and Mr. Flannery, if someone could check to see if this event is actually going on, I was told there's going to be a dedication at Adams City High School on Thursday at 3:30, and they're going to dedicate the health facility to Lois Kimmons, so it is going on, but I have not seen 3:30 on Thursday, the 13th, at Adams City High School, but I hadn't seen any information on it, so we need to get something on that to get people there.
Can you check into that for me?
Yeah, and maybe just send it out to everybody, and I don't know if we can put that on our city website or not, but, you know, whatever we can do to get that out. And that's all I have, if no one else has any further information, or, this meeting will be adjourned, drive safe, Mr.